All right, good morning. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation led by Pastor Jim Gerlt of Olivet Baptist Church, and then it'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Harley McWilliams of Girl Scouts Troop 27. Please stand as you are able.
If you allow me just a moment of personal thought, I am familiar enough with city government to know that you get far more gripes than you get expressions of gratitude. I want to express gratitude to you. I live on Southwest 29th, about a half a mile west of Cemetery Road. There have been more accidents there in the last seven years than I can count, but y'all got a four-way stop there this summer. To my knowledge, there's not been an accident since. So on behalf of my neighborhood, thank you. And this is probably the first time you've ever been thanked for a four-way stop, but we are grateful for it. Please bow with me as we pray. Heavenly Father, in this season of gratitude, we offer our thanks to you. Thank you for this morning and a new day of life. And Father, whether we admit it or not, we are all expendable. So another day, another decade, whatever you choose to give us, we thank you. And Father, I also know that we serve at your pleasure. No government exists without the authority of God. So Father, thank you that you have seen in your pleasure to allow these men and women to serve you and to serve our city government, to serve us as citizens. So we thank you for them, Father. And Father, I also would ask today that you help us to remember you are God and we're not. I pray for this council as they conduct the business of the city today. Help them to realize that it is really your business that they're about because we are your people and this is your nation. So Father, give them your divine wisdom as they conduct the business today. May you be honored and glorified in all that is done. Thank you for the way that you have blessed our city, the way we're growing. Father, thank you for the good reputation that Oklahoma City is receiving nationwide because of our athletics and because of so many other things. Father, I pray for our state government that you will give them wisdom to know how to lead our nation, to help us to build up from the bottom of the education pile and to build up economically as well. So Father, we are just totally dependent on you for your wisdom and your guidance. So direct the meeting today and it all, may it all be done according to your will. And I ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible and liberty, justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Gerlt and thank you Harley. All right, I call this meeting of the city council to order. Thank you for your patience. We had a little hiccup this morning with our system that we use to record votes, Prime Gov, but it seems to be working now. And I also want to welcome the Delta Sigma Theta sorority. There's quite a few members here in the chamber today. They are here for their day at City Hall and will be joining us for much of the morning. We are now at item three, Office of the Mayor, and I'm going to make my way to the front for a few presentations. All right, maybe if Small Business Saturday folks could come down? This is our last, yeah sure, come on over here Kirsten. This is our last council meeting before Thanksgiving and of course, what comes after Thanksgiving, but Small Business Saturday. We'd like to hear a little bit more about that, so I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas the city of Oklahoma City celebrates our local small businesses and their contributions to our economy and community. And whereas, small and micro businesses are key drivers of our city's growth, employing approximately two-thirds of our workforce and generating millions in sales tax revenue. And whereas, independent retailers and restaurants have played an essential role in revitalizing neighborhoods and commercial districts while shaping Oklahoma City's economic and cultural identity. And whereas, small business owners further strengthen our city by supporting local nonprofits, investing in their communities, and enriching Oklahoma City's character and culture. And whereas, the city of Oklahoma City recognizes small businesses for creating jobs, fostering opportunity, and sustaining the vitality of our community. And whereas, organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim November 29th, 2025 to be Small Business Saturday in Oklahoma City.
Thank you. Well, we've had just a renaissance of small businesses here in OKC these last 15 years or so, and they've gotten even more organized and they've done a great job of advocating and reminding us how important it is that we support our small businesses. To tell you a little bit more about that, we have Kirsten Holder here this morning.
Thank you so much, Mayor Holt, for recognizing Small Business Saturday and for your continued support of Oklahoma City's retailers. On behalf of Independent Shopkeepers Association and some of the members here before us today, we're grateful to be accepting this award. Small businesses are not small in impact, especially in Oklahoma. As you just heard, the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce reported that we've been ranked 17th for Best U.S. Cities for Small Business. And the USSBA reports that small business accounted for 51%, or you heard two-thirds by some measurements, which far exceeds the national share. Local business is the reason our commercial districts feel alive and welcoming. The place that was once referred to as a flyover state has defied odds and gained championship recognition with the Thunder, of course, which has only put us on the world's stage, which in turn spotlighted our local businesses with all of the art and creativity that has become our state's identity. Even with all of these successful and hopeful metrics, this has been a challenging year for many retailers, which is why the next few months are absolutely critical. Nearly a third of annual revenue comes during the holiday season alone. If you're like my family, it's not a hard ask to attend the Holiday Pop-Up Shops hosted by ISA and supported by the board. The curated list of vendors provide unique and thoughtful gifts for everyone on your list, and usually a few things for yourself as well. The Holiday Pop-Up Shops this year opens on Small Business Saturday, and they run every Friday and Saturday through December 21st. Through its nine seasons, the Pop-Up Shops have generated more than $3 million in sales for small businesses. This is a give-back opportunity, and it's a really fun one. Shop for the holidays, but do it locally. These purchases are meaningful not only for the recipient, but for some shops, these purchases are the difference between keeping their doors open next year or not. When people choose to shop local, they hope a business stay open, they help a family stay rooted here, and they help a neighborhood stay resilient, thriving, and vibrant. Small Business Saturday is both a reminder of that impact and a celebration of the businesses that keep Oklahoma City special. If you're not familiar with the local businesses in your area, ISA has a great tool on their website for finding a shop near you, or maybe a new-to-you shop. The website is isaok.org. Thank you again for recognizing the importance of this day and for championing many of the small business owners here today and so many more.
Thank you. Let's hear it for our small businesses. Thank you all. All right, well now, why don't we bring our Teacher of the Month forward, Nikki. You're a fan favorite Nikki. All right, well let's learn a little bit more about you. I'd ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Nikki Mays has been named Teacher of the Month for November 2025 by the Millwood Public School District and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. And whereas Nikki Mays, known as True Champion, is a 7th grade geography teacher at Millwood Arts Academy. And whereas, Nikki is a change agent in education and believes that all students can and will learn. As a master teacher, she maintains high expectations for herself and her students. And whereas, well-respected among her peers, Nikki uses her strong leadership skills to advocate for the members of her school community and supports her colleagues by modeling best practices, sharing resources, and serving as a teacher mentor. And whereas, Nikki is poised, energetic, confident, creative, and thinks fast on her feet, expertly balancing the social, emotional, and academic needs of all her students. And whereas, Nikki's rapport with students and parents is nothing short of remarkable. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Nikki Mays on her selection as November 2025 Teacher of the Month by Millwood Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Well, that's fantastic Nikki. Thank you so much for your service to the young people of our city. This is a resolution, so we've got to actually pass this, so we'll see. I mean, I think it made a great case. I think it's going to go well. But let's see. We've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. I wish to vote aye.
Mine is stuck. I'll vote yes.
The suspense is killing it. There we go. Passes unanimously. Good crowd today. All right, well Nikki, we'd love to hear a few words from you. The floor is yours.
Good morning, and this is truly an honor. And I thank you, Mayor Holt, for recognizing me as Teacher of the Month. And I also thank Millwood for allowing me to be a part of the family. I want to continue to do my best to teach our children and make a difference in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Thank you. All right, now we have our Employee of the Month, Shelley. Come on down. Shelley Garrettson, we'd like to learn a little bit more about you, and so I'd ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Shelley Garrettson has been a city employee for 17 years and serves as Project Management Program Manager for the Information Technology Department. And whereas, Shelley continually exemplifies excellence in both customer satisfaction and internal collaboration, demonstrating professionalism, initiative, and a strong work ethic in every project she leads. And whereas, Shelley has made significant contributions to key initiatives including IT strategic alignment for city departments, Oracle Fusion Cloud Services support, and the budget application software solution. And whereas, Shelley's ability to analyze complex challenges and deliver practical, effective solutions is instrumental to the team's success. And whereas, Shelley embodies the One City, One Team vision, fostering a positive, inclusive, and collaborative work environment, and is a trusted and respected colleague who consistently leads with excellence in support, to support others. And whereas, Shelley's leadership has played a vital role in onboarding new team members, helping them ramp up quickly while maintaining high productivity. And whereas, Shelley recently handled a particularly complex client issue with professionalism and grace, transforming a potential escalation into a glowing customer review. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Shelley Garrettson, November 2025 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
All right, yes, well, this is a great crowd. They just burst into applause at everything. Go ahead. All right, let's go to the monitor now, see how this is going to go for you Shelley. We've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. I wish to vote aye.
I'll vote yes.
All right, passes unanimously. There you go. Well, Shelley, we'd love to hear a few words from you, so the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor Holt. This is really such an honor. A lot of really great people are in this club, so I want to thank my team, Erin and Amy, Lapina and Luke. I wouldn't be standing up here if it wasn't for them, really. They're the reason I do anything that I can do. And then also, IT is a great department. And NIT, the One City, One Team, is not just a slogan, but the way that we work, so.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. Thank you for your service. Let's hear it for Shelley. All right, that concludes Office of the Mayor. We have no items from council, so we're at item five, City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager.
We have several items that are on today. There's two that we're going to have reports on. So the first one is a presentation on the Resident Survey. Chris Tatham with ETC Institute. They do our resident, annual resident survey and really appreciate the partnership and the work that they do. And he'll give us a presentation on this year's Resident Survey Report.
Mayor and members of the council, it's great to be back. I realized as I was coming to Oklahoma City today that my first presentation for this survey was in 2005. So this is the 20th presentation. We missed one year. And working with this city, given that I've worked with thousands of communities across the country, you are one of the most steadfast, consistent, as far as getting input from residents of any city in the country. So to be congratulated for that, and you're going to see some good news in the results, but also some opportunities to continue doing better. For anyone who's not familiar with ETC Institute, we're based in Kansas City. We now have offices around the world. We've surveyed over a million people in the past few years. In fact, we've done more than 50 surveys for the city of Oklahoma City, including the annual survey that we've done most of the past many years. And our purpose as a company is really to provide local leaders an opportunity to objectively hear what the average resident, or business, or other people who you are serving think about issues. The results don't make the decision, but they help inform decisions so you understand how things are changing and what you can do to better serve the community better. Today, I'm going to walk you through basically what we found, give you an overview of the demographics. You're the ones who have to use the data, so it's always important to me that you're comfortable. And if you have questions about how the survey is done, that way when you look at the interpretation, you can feel comfortable that the results do represent the city and your ward. This year's survey was very similar to previous surveys. It was administered to 1,283 residents. We get 150 from each ward to make sure the ward data is statistically valid, as well as the city as a whole. The data is not perfect. It has a precision of plus or minus 2.7% at the 95% level of confidence. And I know that's real boring statistical stuff, but it basically means if we did the survey 100 times, 95 times out of 100, we get these same results within about 3% or less. So it's very good data and very consistent from year to year. Some of the things that I just want to share with you is we tend to make sure that we have good representation for several demographic issues. It's challenge to make sure that we have good representation from all age groups. If you actually look at the census distributions relative to our sample, they're pretty close across the board when it comes to race and ethnicity. We get good representation from all income groups. And the last one are just all these dots represent the block address, not the exact address of the respondent. And sometimes because the city is so large, people wonder, well, what about all those areas in yellow where there are no respondents? Well, this year I added your land use map, and you'll notice the yellow areas are where people live, the green and other ones are where people don't live. And if you look at the distribution of our dots, they pretty much line up very nicely with the places where people live. So if you all have good representation demographically and geographically, and given the historic nature, trends that we've tracked for you for many years, I think you once again can have confidence in this year's survey results. So with that said, I'm going to lead off with the major findings, get through some of the details how I got there, and then come back to the major findings at the end. But the number one thing I want to highlight, and it's not in this chart, but it's coming up soon, is overall satisfaction with the direction the city is headed. We've shared this for you in the past, but I've never had a national benchmark for you. It's always seemed to be good. This year, 72% of your respondents believe the city's moving in the right direction, which was up three points from last year. Only 11% of your residents don't agree. This is actually almost 30% above the national average in today's time. So congratulations on that compared to most of the nation. Most of the nation does not think their local government is moving in the right direction, but your residents of Oklahoma City certainly do. Second, you're setting the standard for most city services. I'm going to walk you through a number of things, but the one that I want to highlight is the overall quality of city services. You're 19% above the national average for large cities and almost 12% above the national average for all cities, which is incredible. The overall priorities have not changed. It continues to be streets, effectiveness of how you're dealing with the homeless response issues and others. So for the most part, things did not change radically. And in addition, we looked at the trends. The overall results were pretty similar to previous years. But let me start off with some of the major findings. This chart shows overall ratings of the city compared to our national average, which is for cities of more than 250,000 residents. And then also, excuse me, for our large communities in gray. And then the national average for all cities is in red. And you'll notice on here is a place to live, place to work, is a city that's moving in the right direction, a place to visit, a place to raise children, a place to retire. Oklahoma City is significantly above all of them. And as I mentioned before, the overall satisfaction with the direction the city is headed right now is at 71%, 71.6%. Nationally for large cities, it's just 41.9%. And for all cities, it's 47.9%. So again, in periods of difficult time and uncertainty, this city appears to have a lot of confidence in your residents and continues to be rated as a great place to live, work, and raise children. With some of the major city services that we take a look at, things like fire, trash, ambulance service, police services, I won't read the list here of all of them, but I want to highlight how well you rate compared to other national averages. Your communication is more than double the national average for local governments, for large local governments, at 51.6% compared to 24.2% nationally. You can see customer service is almost double the national average at 61.2% compared to just 31.9% for large cities nationally. And you can see things like police are more than 20% above the national average, your trash service is 35% above the national average, and fire services are also 20% above the national average. So you're doing a lot of things right. Streets, I think the residents forgive you on that because this has been rated below the national average for a long time, but it doesn't seem to hurt their perception of leadership and the direction that the city is going. And transit, I think there's expectations. I'm going to share some slides for just more and better service for people. When it comes to some of the other things, the last things I'll share is the overall quality of city services. You can see it's 19% above the national average. Perceptions of your downtown are more than 20% above the national average. The image and even planning growth you'll see is almost twice the national average for large communities at 52 to 27.5% on average. Feeling of safety, we've been assessing some of the issues related to traffic, related to homeless concerns and things like that. And though it still trails slightly below the national average, it's actually increased 4% from last year. So again, I think you're moving in the right direction. So lots of good findings when we compare you nationally. And what I like about this chart is we ask people the overall satisfaction with the overall quality of services. And then we show on this chart the average rating for each of the wards, and you'll see it's all the same color. So it doesn't matter which ward you live in, overall satisfaction levels are pretty high citywide. And that's really unusual in a city the size of Oklahoma City to be able to provide equity in the quality of city services. So with that said, let me talk a little bit about the trends from last year. These are the major categories of city services. And you can see there's not a lot of major changes. A few things have gone up, a few things have gone down. You'll see streets is a little bit lower, transit is slightly lower, codes are a little bit lower. On the other end, you'll see things like ambulance service is a little better, trash service is a little bit better, and overall customer service from city employees. But for the most part, the trends are pretty much the same compared to a year ago. And I think in an era where a lot of communities are really struggling to provide high-quality services, consistency is one of the marks of excellence. And we see that with the city of Oklahoma City. And specifically, there were 89 areas that were assessed in 2024 and again in 2025. Seven of these, which isn't a lot of changes, increased by 3%. And one of the things I want to highlight is the helpfulness of city staff was the one that increased the most. So again, your employees are out in the front lines, have a positive impact on the residents' perceptions of the city. That was up 7%. You can see, I mentioned before, ambulance service, communication, perceptions of safety, your golf courses, a place to visit, and the overall quality athletic programs, all of those areas were significant improvements. With regard to decreases, there were just 12 decreases. So again, putting that in perspective, there were just 19 significant changes out of 80-some. So not a lot of things changed. The biggest decrease this year was in code enforcement. It was down 5%. Some of the other areas that we saw decreases related to code enforcement were enforcing the exterior maintenance of residential property, and also the enforcement of mowing and cutting weeds and grass on private property. We saw condition of streets and wastewater also slightly decreased from a year ago. But all in all, for the most of the items that were assessed, there was no significant change from 2024 to 2025. With that said though, you just don't want to figure out what satisfaction is. It's what do people think the priority should be? And so when we ask people their overall perceptions of satisfaction, you'll see the effectiveness of homeless response system and condition of streets continue to receive some of the lowest ratings of all the areas that were assessed. In fact, the items on the top of this chart are typically setting the standard In fact, the items on the top of this chart are typically setting the standard for the whole nation, whereas in the items on the bottom chart are kind of what's left over. And I think that's one of the reasons they continue to get flagged as high priorities for the community. And you can see when it comes to condition of streets, I think just the enormous size geographically of the city of Oklahoma City makes it a challenge. And you can see the ratings for overall condition of streets is pretty much the same regardless of where people live. And the issue about homeless response, the homeless situation is also impacting people pretty evenly regardless of where they live. People are probably having concerns, and you can see that here as well. When it comes to the overall priorities, we asked people to pick the services they thought were the top priorities. Streets has been the top service for many, many years, but as I said before, I think it's your customer service and other things that overcome some of the challenges you've had with streets, which is one of the reasons you consistently get good ratings for the direction of the city, even though one of the most important services is actually rated lower than the national average. You can see the second top priority or second highest priority is a homeless response system, traffic flow, code enforcement, and police services, and parks and recreation kind of ran up the top half. And when we do analysis to identify where you should emphasize messages, perhaps investments, or what things are likely to have the most positive impact on satisfaction moving forward, we look at not just the importance, but also the satisfaction to give you some guidance. And you can see streets and homelessness are the top two. The next tier are traffic flow, code enforcement, and public transit. And the next tier after that is police and parks and recreation. You can see for the most part, most of the items get relatively low IS ratings except for the first three on that list, which have been at the top of the list for quite some time. As far as the additional things that we looked at this year's survey, we had a number of questions that probed deeper, one of which was the interaction with police. We actually wanted to find out what residents think about their interactions with police and whether or not they had a good experience. We found out about half of the residents, 46%, said they had interacted with the police officer in the last three years. And then we asked them a follow-up question, were they treated fairly? And 87% said yes. And it was pretty similar across racial lines and other areas. So all in all, most of the residents who interact with your police are having a real positive. And I doubt that 42% broke the law. So that means the police is, your police officers are getting out there and interacting with the public beyond just issuing citations, which is great. And that's probably one of the reasons overall satisfaction with your police services is 21% above the national average. Other things we asked people because of the transit, we wanted to find out a little bit more under issue, what is it? Is it because it's a bad service or not enough service? And when we ask people some of the issues, you'll see that people would like to see more routes to more places, stops closer to home, more frequency of service. So really, some of the lower ratings we see on public transit aren't that you have a bad service. In fact, we've done a number of your onboard surveys and satisfaction is very high among your current customers. It's really a desire for more service, and that's what we see in the results this year. We also asked people about some neighborhood issues. And one of the things we asked people were what kind of problems they were experiencing in their neighborhoods. And you can see the most frequent problem or that we saw that was reported as a problem at least once a week or more than once a week by 26% of the respondents was traffic and pedestrian safety. So as part of this survey this year, we actually asked some questions about whether or not people, what they thought about law enforcement. And you can see when we asked people their overall satisfaction of enforcement of local traffic laws, you'll see about 1 in 3, that's in the smaller pie chart there, said they were very dissatisfied or dissatisfied. We then did a follow-up question as to why they were dissatisfied, and 83% felt there weren't enough citations. That's always a challenge. Do you do more enforcement or less enforcement? Right now, the biggest issue is that people are probably feeling unsafe because they think people are driving too quickly through their neighborhoods or not safely through their neighborhoods. A new finding this year, as we've tracked this for many years for you, newspapers used to be at the top of the list. You can see it's way down the list these days. But the new number one source of information for residents about the city of Oklahoma City is now social media. This is the first time it's been at the top of the list. It was the second last year, and it's worked its way from not even being on the list back in 2005 to being the number one source. The other tool that we have for you, I'm not going to go into detail today, but one of the great things about your staff is you're able to, I know some of you like to do this too, be able to drill down into the findings. So we have a dashboard that has all the data from all your surveys in one place. So you can take a look at trends, you can take a look at maps, you can see how you compare on a wide variety of things. For example, if you want to take a look at just demographics and how people respond to different questions, citywide or by ward, you can go to this function here and actually take a look at who responded to certain questions. And this is a place to live. And you can see how people respond based on their race, based on their age, and so forth. And we have found in a number of communities around the country that younger adults, 20 to 34, are typically less satisfied across the board with a lot of things. And you can even see that on this result where you see the little bars to the left and the middle, ratings of the city as a place to live, as it goes up from the younger people to the older people from 71 to 88%. The other tools that we have are the ability to look at trends. We actually have the data online now for you for every survey dating back to 2020. And one of the things I wanted to highlight here is for your customer, excuse me, from 2016, is customer service, you have just steadily improved. You really hit it out of the park during COVID. You might remember I shared how well you did, but it's been just steady. If you look all the way back to 2016, each year, things, with the exception of COVID, getting a big positive spike, you just keep moving the needle forward. So you've always done well in customer service, but you continue to do it. And this is really the reflection of your employees interacting with the public. And that's one of the things I wanted to highlight for you. A last thing I'll highlight from this is if you want to see how things are changing in your wards or citywide, you can actually look at the trends in the map. This one particularly is the rating of the city as a moving in the right direction. And you can see Ward 7, Ward 4, Ward 3 are off the charts as far as the overall direction. Citywide, it was up over two points, but you'll see there were a couple of places that stayed about the same. Again, the margin of error is more than what you see for all of this. The only one that really exceeded the margin of error was Ward 7, but you can see a couple of them were slightly below. But this allows you to actually take a look at how have investments, how have priorities perhaps that you've been looking at in your own ward changed from year to year? So you can have access to that information. So again, lots of information here. I want to highlight, Mayor and members of the council, what a great job you do. I think most of the time you probably are spending your time responding to the concerns and the negatives and how to make things better, but you're clearly listening and clearly making decisions that are positively impacting this community. You don't get ratings for your major services like trash, customer service, communication, planning for growth, police and fire service at 20 points above the national average by accident. And you don't have the community that's a great place to live, work, retire, and a wonderful downtown, again, without long-term commitment to what the public thinks and making wise investments for many, many years. And lastly, first time we've ever rolled out the benchmark as a city moving in the right direction. We knew you were doing well, but we didn't know how well. And I think you can take a lot of pride in the fact that you're 30 points above the national average in that regard. So with that, Mayor, I don't know if there's any questions, but congratulations for another good year, and hopefully this data will help the city continue to move in the right direction in the future.
Thank you. And you said that that particular question on moving in the right direction is how many points above the national average?
Yeah, you're right at 30 points. I put that, that's the second, here we go, right, this slide here, very right here. Moving around, you're at 71.6, national average for large cities is 41.9. So almost 30 points above the national average. And at one time, we had another data, it was about 10 years ago, it was more in the 50s. So it just shows how things have changed nationally, but your number keeps getting better.
And really to validate that, every election we have on our major initiatives tracks right around that number. So I mean, it kind of, I think that's kind of the cohort that feels that way is also voting to support our progress. Any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the total number of responses is available on each item.
Yes, so it was, not every question is asked to everyone, but you can take a look, if you go to the dashboard, if that's what you're asking for, you can see them for every year dating back to 2016.
Thank you.
Yeah, so you'll have this year, it was 1,283, I think. And then you can look at last year, it would have been a slightly different number, but all of that is now in one master database.
But just to be clear, like on the individual items and then the follow-up questions, we can still see the total number of responses on those?
You can. The only good example would be is if, for example, somebody was dissatisfied with police services. We asked why you were dissatisfied just to the subset, but they're still part of the overall database, if that makes sense.
Right. Well, I just want to make sure that as we're looking at percentages, a lot of times they're very large or very small, that we can also say, well, what was the actual number on that?
No. And I particularly would just caution as you look at your ward, if you start to break it down by demographics and you look at the three people who are Asian and that responded from your ward, probably not good to make decisions or references about that group of people. So that's a great point, is be cautious in how you start breaking it down because once you get really below the city level or below the ward level outside of the ward total, the data is not statistically valid at that point when you get too small of a sample.
Right. Thank you.
Chris, excuse me.
Is that how this goes out?
Oh, no, I should have recapped. We actually select a random sample of households each year. We then mail a survey to them separately from the water bill. We then follow up with texts, emails, and even direct social media now to encourage people to participate.
Chris, I just wanted to thank you for 20 years of surveying. This is, as I say it every year, this is one of the favorite reports I review each year, and I can't wait to read through it. We had good numbers last year. I'd say we had good numbers this year, and we may have improved a little over last year. Would you agree?
Yeah, overall, what happens is when you become a high-performing organization, you tend not to see lots of change from one year to the next. It's kind of like you keep doing really well, and you'll see 3% or 4% increases, 3% or 4% decreases, and those tend to be the biggest changes. You know, this year, the biggest improvement was 7%. The biggest decrease was just 5%. And so I think your consistency is one of the reasons residents' overall satisfaction remains so high from year to year.
Thanks again for being here.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks for the partnership. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Happy anniversary, 20 years. Thank you so much.
So next up, Jeff Butler, our Planning Director, is going to give a presentation on bike lane projects. I don't know, several months ago, I'd had some questions about bike lanes as they're coming in and they're removing lanes of traffic. We make sure that we're giving people a heads up so council members are aware when we have a bike lane that's going in that we're removing a lane of traffic. Had an issue of a project that was coming up. I had not notified council, and I wanted to make sure this one that was planned for class, and Jeff will talk about that today. What we want to try to do is get on a regular routine of getting presentations in front of council about every year, doing just general updates on where we're heading with bike lanes. We've got bike lane projects that are in the bond program. We've got some that are in the MAPS 4 program. We want to be able to get this in front of council so you're well. And then also committing to do some private briefings as projects are coming online ahead of time, just so that you're aware of that. So doing a better job of communicating that. And so I'm going to let Jeff just walk through this and talk about some of the projects that we've got upcoming here in the next few years and then kind of the status of where we are with the projects we've been doing.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Jeff Butler, Planning Director. As Craig mentions, I'll go through a few upcoming bike lane projects. Briefly, this is kind of why we do this, why we build bike lanes these days. We have studies that say that they are reducing traffic injuries for all modes, not just cyclists, so they make our streets safer, they make our travelers safer. Physical activity is good, as we all know, so riding a bike, walking, et cetera, is helpful in that regard. And it's a lot cheaper to own a bike or a scooter or something like that than it is a car if you're a lower moderate-income household. So just a quick summary slide, we have several projects that I'll go through kind of one by one, and there's a lot of information, so I'll go quickly. If you have a question on a specific project or any question at all, feel free and stop me and we can pause. Also have Debbie Miller, Public Works Director here, and David Todd, our MAPS Director, available for questions as well. So here are the numbers. We have funded projects and designed or under construction, on-street bike routes, 12 miles, trails 32, and sidewalks 124. We'll focus on bike lanes today. Various funding sources, including 2017 bond and sales tax monies, general obligation bonds, again, 2017 and upcoming 2025, there's a couple of bike lane projects in that bond package. MAPS 4 had many million dollars dedicated to bike lanes, and also we received federal funds through ACOG. This is just in here so that you can see when we plan for bike lanes, we look for streets that have capacity to accommodate them. And so this is just an example of a table that ACOG that we use that provides guidelines for traffic levels. So for example, a two-lane arterial can handle anywhere from, well, zero, of course, up to 15,000 cars per day, the average annual daily traffic range there. And then you can see all the way up to six lanes, which would be class and would be designed to accommodate, you know, 32,000 up to 40,000 trips per day. So I have several slides here that just talk about the individual projects, and we can share this with you later because, you know, there's a lot of information here. But bike lanes, we're going to share seven or eight of these. You can see the project type here, the scope element is kind of what's involved because not, a lot of these come with various improvements, bike lanes, sidewalks, crossings, resurfacing. Some of them are more limited, some of them are kind of the complete package. So this one in particular, Sixth Street, Linwood Boulevard, this is one that Linwood has quite a bit of capacity. And the Sixth Street portion actually is something that we were approached several years ago by property owners along Sixth Street wanting to do a street enhancement project there, which would include better parking situation and bike lanes. There's excess capacity there to accommodate that. This funding source is a combination of better streets, safer city sales tax, as well as some ACOG funds that we're able to get through a grant. And then you can see there the design capacity on Linwood. It's quite a large street, it can handle a lot of traffic, but the current volumes are a tiny fraction of what it could actually accommodate. So this is an example of, you know, opportunities we look at to kind of right-size a street where it's in some sense overbuilt for vehicles anyway, for cars, we can accommodate a bike lane. This project is Northwest Fourth and Northwest Sixth Street. I mean, you can see they're kind of two separate but related projects close to each other. These, this is a funding, mostly this is a grant-funded ACOG project, and the amount is $6 million. This gets a resurfacing, which I think is pretty much the bulk of the cost, bike lanes and on-street parking. And you can see the volumes and the capacities there. This is a north-south facility, Robinson Avenue, and this goes from Seventh Street to Grand. So this is a full street enhancement, includes a lot of things, including resurfacing and sidewalks, bus stops, lighting improvements, and bike lanes. And this, this is a bond project, and it's also receiving grant funds through ACOG. Classen Boulevard, this is from Sheridan to Northwest 10th Street. This also was a, this actually goes back several years to the Better Classen planning process years ago. And it was funded, the street enhancement was funded through 2017 bond funds, and we received a grant through ACOG. The amounts that we put in the bond, I think it was about $2.5 million, and the balance is through an ACOG grant. And that would involve many, many different things. Again, bus stop improvements, lighting, sidewalk crossing improvements, just various safety improvements, and bike lanes as well. There you see the design capacity for the six-lane classen. The volumes there are actually what you would see is pretty typical of a four-lane arterial in various places in the city. Northeast Fourth Street and Northeast Eighth Street, again, two projects nearby. These came out of the recent MAPS plan for the connectivity, the connectivity plan for the Innovation District. So these are related projects, they're funded by MAPS. There you see the design capacity of those facilities and the current volumes. And this, again, provides a lot of different scope elements, including bike lanes, sidewalks, trees, and lighting upgrades. Another north-south project is Villa Avenue, the street enhancement. This goes from 10th to the river. And then also, I'm sorry, bike lanes, resurfacing, sidewalks, and lighting. 39th Street, this actually would connect at Pennsylvania, and it would meet up with the new street enhancement that, the relatively new street enhancement that goes through the district just to the west of that yellow line, and it would continue all the way to Chertel Avenue. all the way to Chertel Avenue. And that's a street that has a lot of additional capacity that we have room to put a bike lane on as well. And the amount there is about $4 million, and it's also a 2025 bond project, one of the two in 2025 bond. The Stockyards, this is another good example of a street that has a lot of capacity. It's designed to accommodate about 22,000 cars per day, and it's got a very low current volume of 2,000. And this, this project would install bike lanes and make additional parking upgrades. It's just a street that really could use a lot of cleanup. That has been designed, and it's about ready for construction. Lastly, a couple of projects that I didn't have all the details for, but they're mentioned here. There's a couple of Phase 1, oh, sorry, I didn't get that on there. There's a couple of Phase 1 projects on here that we can get you more information on, but these are specific to Phase 2 alignments. Those are coming soon. There's about $22 million budgeted for MAPS 4 bike lanes, and 11 million of those are for Phase 2. So there's still some of the projects in the works, and what we intend to do is come back to you at least annually, potentially more often as the council desires, and give you updates on the progress of additional bike lanes and where those alignments are proposed. We can also do additional briefings to the extent that's desired. So here's a quick summary map as we conclude. This shows existing facilities. The purple lines are charros or just kind of shared facilities, they're not lanes, but the, kind of the bold red lines are the funded projects that you'll see coming online soon. And just a quick note, this is not just for bikes. A lot of scooter users use these. I was actually quite surprised the other day to learn that we have new data from scooter companies, and the average annual trips on scooters these days is about 400,000 in a year, and that's trending upwards. So we could see easily half a million scooter trips per year, and it tends to be closer to actually, in this area that you see here, kind of the core of the city, where we see just a lot of scooter trips. So there's a lot of different, not just bikes, a lot of different ways to use these facilities. In closing, we were trying to upgrade our public engagement for bike facilities, and we've got a new website with new material that's coming online. Additional content's been filmed, and that's on the way to be posted. We just want to make sure that people understand how to use the facilities, both drivers and cyclists and scooter users, how to ride and what to do, because sometimes things are a little different than what they're used to, and that can be a little unsettling when you see a street that's been newly striped and you're not exactly sure how to navigate it. We do try as much as we can to design so that it is intuitive, but this, I think, will help users as well. So with that, I'll be happy, we are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Craig, this is directed towards you. When I was first elected, I would get books and articles and phone calls from Eric Groves, and he was the Ward 2 city council person in the '70s and '80s. He sent me numerous different things, including The Death and Life of Great American Cities by Jane Jacobs. But when he would call, and I use this word intentionally, he would lecture me about certain things, and I appreciated that. I learned a lot from him. But one thing that he spoke about over and over was the importance of Classen Boulevard to Oklahoma City, and I really do think this is a vital and really important street that we always need to stay focused on. So if we're going to have some briefings, I'd like to have briefings earlier rather than later, as it goes with Classen Boulevard, please.
And I've got a question for you. From an engineering standpoint, I mean, used to, when we looked at capacity, we always looked at bouncing busy hour, right? Because we don't know what that busy hour is. Could be 7:00 in the morning, 6:00 in the morning, could be 8:00 at night. Do we ever try to look at what the busy hour is on those streets? Because I know in the past, we've had to cancel some of these, because when we started looking at the busy hour, it's like, all right, it's going to be backed up a mile here with the loss of that additional lane. So I'm just curious, do we have the tools to be able to look at busy hour?
Yes, good question, and we do. You're right. We, so the average daily traffic counts is not everything, you know? It's, once you get into the design phase, it is important to look at the peak hour and when that is and how, just how much it is, because it could be that that kind of bumps it to a point where it's, you know, it's questionable or even infeasible. So, but until you get to that design point, so we don't necessarily have good, solid data citywide for every intersection, every street section, for just all the turning movements and the peak counts. But what we do have for planning purposes are the traffic counts. But yes, once we get to the design phase, we can really look at it and see, okay, just how feasible is this design? Do we need to do something different, or do we need to move this alignment if it's just not feasible?
Okay. Thank you.
I have a few comments and then a question. I think this is interesting timing to go with the resident survey, particularly the item about concern about people like speeding, like just safety for pedestrians and generally, I guess, people outside of cars and neighborhoods, because I think it's interesting to think about the impacts of more mobility options and more freedom in options to reduce and maybe help improve people's feelings of safety in their neighborhoods, even if the infrastructure isn't in their neighborhoods, particularly the fact that they can get out of their neighborhood outside of a car or other, maybe their neighbors, maybe they can't, but their neighbors could and might be able to take more advantage of those types of mobility options. I think that's like an interesting connection to have these presentations sort of tied in. And I also, to your point about the scooters, I think is really something that I've noticed with bike lanes, particularly where there aren't sidewalks. I also see a lot of people using the bike lanes as a pathway for walking, particularly one of the ones I see most often is on South Walker, like around, I think it's like 29th to Grand. There's like a few stretches where there's no sidewalk on one side of the street, and I very often see families, children, people using those to navigate, walking down the street. So thinking too about them as like this broader mobility project and like the opportunities like to expand both transportation options, but just general like freedom of choice for people and make those things more possible. But going back to the safety piece, I'm curious where, because I recognize that the, I think for me, there's always this tension of the traffic counts that like, it's a little bit like a self-fulfilling loop a bit, where like, you're like, well, the traffic counts are too high, so we can't do X, but then the traffic counts are so high, people don't say, feel safe, you know, traversing that area. So I'm curious, like, and I think we really see that through like a lot of the Vision Zero data that you have all presented around like the areas where the highest fatalities for, you know, cars and people outside of cars getting hit and having, you know, catastrophic or fatal results are in areas that don't have, you know, they aren't the areas that you highlighted, sort of like in the core where maybe it's, it looks overbuilt for vehicles. So I'm just curious, like, how we navigate that going forward of like not solely thinking, like recognizing that like if we're, if we're also kind of looking towards this Vision Zero space, like, and in goal, like how we thread that needle, I guess, of prioritizing safety over how fast an automobile can get through an intersection or through a particular part of the city?
Yeah, thank you. Good question. It's, it is a balancing act, and a lot of it comes down to, like we discussed earlier, is this the right place to put a bike lane? When you factor all those considerations for, you know, cyclist safety, would it have a traffic calming influence? The answer is almost always yes, but what's the risk to the cyclists? Is there a risk? And what can we do to mitigate that through the design? So if it is a busier street, it still may be appropriate to add a bike lane as long as the, as long as the design is appropriate, so as long as it's highly visible, it's got the appropriate buffer, that is, the width and the buffer or the delineator types, you know, all the green paint, all the visibility we can muster, and making sure that the intersection designs themselves are safe, that the lights are timed appropriately. I mean, it's a, it's a, and there's quite a lot that goes into the design of these to make them safe. And, you know, then it's also a tracking, you know, to your point, with Vision Zero, we want to make sure, and we're tracking these over time, so that if we do have incidents or even near misses, that we rethink things. But we do everything we can during the planning and design process to make sure that it's going to be a net positive for all users, and that it's going to be safe, because we don't want to put a facility somewhere where we're putting people at greater risk. We do look forward to having additional data about cyclist patterns in the future, and that's something that we're looking into, getting data sources and also generating our own data so that we can see that behavior, and there are various ways to do that.
One other question. What's the impact of this on our residential survey? I mean, our lowest point on anything is city streets, right? I'm just curious if anyone has any ideas. Is that going to bring up our survey results, or is it going to decline our survey results?
I think it depends, again, like what Jeff's saying, like where we end up putting the lane, the traffic, or the bike lanes. I think if it impedes traffic, I think that, you know, flow of traffic is another area that is one that people aren't satisfied with. So I think it's, it comes down to, it's a safety issue that's really, you know, making sure it's accessible and it's safe, but also the effect on the flow of traffic. I think the response will be different depending upon where we have the bike lanes, yeah.
Sure. Thank you.
Do we count bikers, bicyclists, like we do traffic counts?
I think we've got the ability. I'll let Jeff answer that.
Yeah, so we can in certain circumstances. So we have the, you know, we've all seen the cords that go across the street, so we have the ability to move some counting equipment around, but it's really just kind of a custom. We have a few pieces of equipment that we can move around to do that. We don't have a citywide way of doing that yet. Some of the data that we use, it's called streetlight that we use to get our traffic counts these days. It does count bikes, but it's not yet, we don't have the ability to see on one particular, you know, stretch of a street, for example. It'll just kind of give us, like the scooter stuff, like this is how many cyclists are going in this area. So what we will be doing, the police department has some equipment that we'll be deploying soon, that they can just kind of put on a poll or something that's nearby the street, and it'll count. So that way, we can kind of get before and afters, or if we're looking at a particular corridor, we'd like to see what's going on, whether it be pre or post bike lane. So yes, short answer, we do have the ability to do that. We just have to kind of do it manually and take a piece of equipment or two and move it around. So if there's any particular corridor you'd like to us to look at, we can certainly do that.
So we have a certain traffic count that we have to hit before we'll widen a road or do an intersection upgrade. How many bikes do we need to have to put in a bike lane?
There's no, there's no set amount. I mean, it certainly matters if we notice that people are already cycling on a corridor. But the difference is, you know, it's kind of like, you know, when do you build a street? Because, you know, or to use another analogy that engineers and planners use, you know, how do you know when to build a bridge? You know, we can't really count the number of people kind of swimming across the river, you know? We just have to kind of estimate what the demand might be if we were to put in a bridge. For bicycles, these lanes are really designed for people young and old. You're always going to have a certain amount of, you know, what we kind of refer to as the spandex cyclists, you know, they're going to, they, they're hardcore, they're going to cycle anywhere, they're going to cycle where it's fast and a lot of traffic, and they're just brave folks, so. But a lot of folks are not comfortable cycling in that kind of environment, and they prefer to have a trail or a protected bike lane that they can use. So what we do is we try and estimate where the demand is, and the scooter information that I mentioned earlier is actually pretty good, because it shows, okay, this is the core of the city. There's a lot of demand for alternative transportation. We know that it's kind of a lower moderate-income area, some of these areas, and so that certainly factors into the demand for these types of facilities. But there's also kind of a threshold where until you have a functioning system, people aren't really going to adopt that until it gets to a point where, yeah, I can get to several places, and I'll go get a bike and I'll invest, and, or I'll start riding a scooter to work, because now I see that there's enough infrastructure and it feels safe enough. So, you know, I, we're still, you know, we've got a good network now. It's a small network, but it's, it can get people to various places. And so if you look at our map, you know, you can start to see that kind of taking shape, at least in the core of the city, where I think most of the demand is.
Jeff, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. I'm looking forward to this conversation further and being more in the loop around the plans around bike lanes, and so I appreciate that. I think to all of my colleagues, I appreciate that we're not saying it's either we have support for good traffic for cars or we have support for bike lanes, because I think what we're looking to do is have quality transportation across our city, no matter what mode of transportation you're using. And so I hope that our efforts to communicate earlier can help us have better community engagement about design, one that takes into account the need of drivers, of course, and people who are cyclists, and just neighbors who are going to be interacting with these streets in general. And so I think about Fourth Street in particular, where I know that I frequently travel Fourth Street, not at a low rate of speed, and I can say that I know many of my neighbors would love to go to Washington Park and cross the street much more easily and safely. So how do we deal with the other people who are going to be using that street like I do as a commuter street or wanting to use it to get to the park? And so I think that's, both things matter. And so I think it's important that we just have that community input about design, and so I appreciate the city manager for bringing this to our attention today.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Jeff. May I please add some remarks? I appreciate you, Councilor Stonecifer, referencing my predecessor who passed away recently. I've spoken with Councilman Groves many times, and I, he and I have lectured each other, so I know about what you speak. Coming from a middle school teaching background, I am always thinking about the safety of a neighborhood for a child and a senior, just always thinking about that. I'm staring at my screen right now, and I am looking at Flower Garden Park, which is a neighborhood right off of Classen. It is under construction right now for the first time in decades with street resurfacing. And I went over there just yesterday. It is wonderful to see. Those neighbors have waited a really long time, and going over there and knocking doors, and this is important for my council members to hear this, because I think sometimes people don't understand what I'm hearing at the doors when I knock these doors. There was a young man over here who lived between, for those of you who don't know, the neighborhood around Flower Garden Park, but there is a young man who, when I knocked his door over here in this neighborhood between 50th and 39th, he worked at the time at Holy Rollers Coffee Shop in the Paseo, and when I asked him, what is your concern for your neighborhood and hopes for our city? He said, I would love better walkability and the ability to safely cross Classen to get to work on my bike. That was his ask. So speaking of lecturing, what is hard for me to hear sometimes is when people who do not live in Ward 2 try to tell the majority of us in Ward 2 what our needs are. That is hard to hear. It's hard to hear. Also hard to hear, you all will remember, and I pulled this up on Google right now, if you type in Classen, OKC, sous chef, hit and run, you'll recall that on Classen Boulevard, outside of Ward 2, we stop at 23rd Street, but right there around 16th and Classen, the entrance into the plaza, where we have award-winning public art now, where we had almost no public art 25 years ago, you'll remember that a car hit and ran and killed 31-year-old Chad Epley, a sous chef who was working downtown at Devon Tower, who tried to use Classen Boulevard on his bike from work to get home, and a vehicle drug him across Classen to his death. His sister, who is friends with many of the people I know in Ward 2, stood at this podium where Director Butler now stands and could barely raise her voice above a whisper. When we were crafting MAPS 4's sidewalk, bike lanes, trails, and streetlight project, she could barely get the words out to advocate for better pedestrians. she could barely get the words out to advocate for better pedestrian and bike safety on Classen Boulevard, advocating for her brother's fate not to be the fate of anyone else on Classen ever again. And that is why there's $22 million in Maps Four for bike lanes. We must not have historical amnesia about the number of people who are in this room right now. There were even more that summer of 2019 advocating for this infrastructure. Classen was a streetcar suburb boulevard when John Chartel and Anton Classen designed it. The neighborhoods which exist along Classen between Northwest Expressway and Main Street deserve, as Councilor Pennington just said, no matter whether you walk, bike, have a wheelchair, afford F-150 like I learned to drive on out in Choctaw, whatever mode of transportation, you should be able to use Classen Boulevard to get to work, recreation, and education. So yeah, brief the council about Classen, but do not try to override the councilperson who represents that area after all the doors I have knocked in that area and listen to people say they do not want their brother dragged to death again on Classen. Like, stop it. That is, I'm just saying, that is upsetting to me to try and say that Classen must only be for cars. That ignores the literal history from 1892 to 1945, when we designed those neighborhoods over there for all people, no matter how they choose, to get around. That's what I have to say. So thank you for your work. Thank you to the voters who approved Maps Four. Thank you to anyone who came and advocated that day. And going forward, we must honor and fulfill that work. We're not turning back.
Thanks, Jeff.
So on city manager report.
Yeah, so we've got two more reports that are on the revenue enforcement report and our year-end performance report. A lot of information in those. We'll be glad to get with you. We don't have a presentation on any of those. And then claims and payroll can be found on OKC.gov. That's all I have.
Thank you. Item six, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Item seven, Request for Uncontested Continuances. Okay, so item 9B is to be struck. Item 11B is to be deferred to December 2nd. Item 11N is to be deferred to December 2nd. Mr. City Manager, is there anything else?
Yes, beginning on page five, item 11V, I'm sorry, 11V, I'm sorry, 9V. Page five, 9V.
Well, could that, well, 9B is already listed. Is there something additional?
9V, I'm sorry, Victor.
V as in Victor. Gotcha.
Yep. Then on page 16, item 11V1, V as in Victor again, unsecured structures. All of these items are stricken from the agenda. Item D, 2501 Northwest 25th Street, the owner is secured. And then on page 16, item 11W1, it's the same item, item D, 2501 Northwest 25th Street. On page 18, I've got item 11AHB, and we'll strike this item. That's all the items that I have.
All right.
City Manager, just for clarity, item V as in Victor is being pulled?
Yes.
On which?
Under nine.
Public Art Commission on the agreement on that one. They just need to do some more work on that.
Gotcha.
That brings us then to item eight, Revocable Permits and Events. Item 8A is a revocable right-of-way use permit with Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership to hold the Saint Santa Run, or Saint Santa, I don't know what that, it seems weird, December 6th on Walker, and we've got Olivia Branscombe here.
Hi, Council. Thank you for having me this morning. We are requesting a rolling street closure for Saint Santa Run that's coming up on December 6th. It'll be on the SSM Health St. Anthony Campus, starting at 9:00 AM for registration and packet pickup, but we will start with a kids' dash at 9:45. That's free for kids 10 and under. And then we'll have a one-mile fun run and a 5K starting at 10:30. Bring your costumes. We'll have cash prizes for best Santa costumes, most festive costumes, and most festive pet costumes, and tickets can be, or registrations can be purchased through Downtown and December website and runsignups/santaran.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Hammond?
It's the best time of the year because everyone's dressing up to go running. I'm very happy to move for approval.
Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item B is a revocable right-of-way use permit with Stockyard City Main Street to hold the Cowboy Christmas Parade on December 6th on Exchange, and we have Debbie Harrison here.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, City Manager Freeman. I can't believe it's time again, but it is for the Cowboy Christmas Parade. We're asking for the special event permit to be held on Saturday, December 6th. The parade starts at 10:00 AM from the interchange of Exchange and Penn. It will go west down Exchange to Agnew and then south on Agnew to Southwest 15th Street. We're excited to have Pake McIntyre as the grand marshal for the parade this year. And of course, you know, where else in the city of Oklahoma City can you see the slash-o ranch longhorns parading down the street? So we have a lot of equestrian groups, community organizations, pageant royalty, and then Boy Santa, of course, will bring up the rear of the parade, and you'll have an opportunity to have pictures with him and some gifts at rodeo cinema following the parade. So it's a great event. We'd like to see you all there. If you have any questions, here I am.
It's always a really lovely event, so I'm always very proud to have it hosted in Ward Six. Happy to move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to recess council and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through E we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now we'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A and B we can take with one motion. Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn OC PPA and reconvene as the council, where we are on item nine, the consent docket. Item B was already struck. Item C has a presentation, as well as some residents who signed up to speak. Item V as in Victor was struck. Item AZ has a presentation. And is there anything else that a council member wishes to pull out for a separate vote? Comment? Question?
Individual consideration for AZ, and I'd like a presentation on BD and BN.
Can you repeat?
Yeah, maybe do the, the, B as in, B as in kind of thing.
Bravo, David, and Bravo, Neil.
And you said we were going to have a presentation on C?
No, we do have a presentation on, okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Good to see you. Can we hear a bit about, I'm just really intrigued, this, oh my goodness, where'd it go? It's the schools. I'm so sorry. I was looking at other stuff. Yes, AT. Just would like to learn some more information about that item, please. That's all.
Okay, and we'll take them in order and...
Can I correct myself?
Sure.
Sorry. I had lots of circles and only a couple left to answer. So BD I took off.
Don't need BD.
Yeah.
All right.
So just BN.
Just BN, okay. All right. We'll start then with item C. Mr. City Manager, there's a presentation here?
Yes, I just wanted to give a quick update on this, not really a formal presentation. Kalia Fisher's here with the Municipal Counselors Office. This item is actually an amendment to the previous item. There was question, although there's been a lot of communication on this, the Car Cab, the wrecker service that was recommended for a ward for this, providing services in Zone Four, wrecker service Zone Four, is actually currently outside of that zone. They're working to get a location inside of that zone. And I'll just let Kalia talk through that, like what we were recommending, that we amend this amendment on the contract, and then we have another amendment that we want to include, and I'll let Kalia explain that.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. There were actually three legal issues or concerns that were brought up throughout the protest process and the negotiation process, and I'll address all three of those. The first is, is the city prohibited from contracting with one vendor to service two zones? The answer to that is no. I review the RFP and the applicable city ordinances, along with a deputy municipal counselor and also our procurement attorney, and there's simply no prohibition against the city contracting with one vendor to service two sectors or zones. The second issue that came up is if the city contracts with one vendor to service two sectors, does it cause a negative impact to the public in terms of cost? Just very briefly, the way that the wrecker services contract is administered is the police department will contact a vehicle that needs to be towed wherever they are in the city, that will be located in one of the four zones. They will contact the vendor that services that sector. The wrecker service will go out, tow the vehicle back to their location, which is typically in that sector. The cost of the towing is borne by the vehicle owner. So Car Cab, who's the selected vendor, their current business location is three miles from East Reno, which is the southernmost border of the sector in question. So after learning of this issue, Car Cab volunteered to waive three miles of any tow in Zone Four. And so there is a provision that's been added to the contract to affect that. And then the final issue was, does the vendor have the required number of trucks and drivers to service two zones? Under city code, a vendor is required to have eight trucks and eight drivers to service a sector or a zone. So of course, the selected vendor would have to have 16 trucks and 16 drivers. So Car Cab has 17 trucks. That was confirmed through the Department of Public Safety, and as of yesterday, they have 15 drivers that are certified through DPS, so they are in substantial compliance. We did add a provision to the contract, that's the amendment that we're asking for today, that actually is a contingency provision that requires them to certify to the police department, that they do in fact have 16 drivers before they can assume full responsibility for Zone Four. According to the correspondence from DPS, they're expected to have three more, I'm sorry, two more drivers, which would put them at 17 within the next few days. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Why did they even get approved or looked at during the RFP if they didn't, if they weren't in Zone Four?
So in the RFP process, I believe they submitted approximately 18 or 19 drivers. Since that time, according to documentation that they've provided to me, they've been in the process, they've had employees leave, they've added employees, and so through no fault of their own, the number of employees has shifted and changed because the process has taken several months. They did provide documentation to me throughout this process that showed that they had submitted, I believe, four or five drivers back in May of this year, and it was just DPS that was taking a long time to certify those drivers.
So that was why we, they were approved, like conditionally, meeting the requirements, but the decision was made that we would put a contingency on that, that they had to meet the requirements before we moved forward. They were clearly the top rated among those that were on the selection committee, so the decision was that we would bring this forward and recommend a contingency on that. Currently, it's being served by two different approved vendors that, Car Cab is one and then Arrow?
Yes.
Is the other, that service that area. They can continue to do that until the contingency is fulfilled. So that was the recommendation from staff.
I guess, I don't feel like my question was answered. I'm sorry. They're not located in Zone Four. Why were they even allowed to submit a bid, since that's one of the main requirements in this RFP is that you're located in this district?
The requirement for the business location to be in the zone in question is, it's not a requirement. It's found, it's nowhere in the RFP and nor is it found in city code.
It was not in the RFP that your business must be located in the zone that you'd be operating in?
No. What the language says in the RFP is, it is the contracting entity's belief that the public can best be served by dividing wrecker services into four separate zones with the wrecker service provider located in each zone. So it was a preference, but not a requirement. And that's the only time in the RFP that that type of language appears.
Will you read that again? Did you say located?
It is the contracting entity's belief that the public can best be served by dividing wrecker services into four separate zones with the wrecker service provider located in each zone.
So it's not specifically required? It's stated that that's a preference, but it's not specifically required?
It uses the word located.
Right. Right, and that's, and that's something that can be questioned. And the Car Cab has stated that they are working to get a location in Zone Four, and that was the reason for the additional amendment that was the one in the agenda today, to approve that based upon they're waiving the first three miles, they're located three miles outside of the zone. That was the reason to move forward with that amendment.
So the way that the legal department is reading that is that it's a preference, but not a requirement?
I think it'd be important to hear from, I know that there are a number of people who are signed up to speak, so it'd probably be good to hear from them, and maybe we can get some of those questions answered that they might bring up.
All right. Well, we have a few. I'll go ahead and say in advance, when I call you up, say your name and address and limit your remarks to three minutes or less. You'll get a verbal warning when you have 30 seconds left. Okay, forgive me, I can't quite read the handwriting, but Jason Mart, possibly? Is there a Jason who wants to speak on this topic? Go ahead.
Oh, I had some documents for her. I thought she was going to pass them out to everybody.
She's working on it, but we need to get them out.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jason Martin. I own property in Zone Four and own several businesses out of Zone Four that I own and operate, and I also have investments in a Zone Four towing operation. I'm here because the city council is preferring to vote on awarding Zone Four wrecker and impound contract. The decision before you has direct implications for taxpayer fairness, public safety, efficiency, and the integrity of the Oklahoma City's procurement process. The RFP 0CITY 26408 is the city's own RFP rules. The solicitation for Zone Four states that it is mandatory the selected provider have its business and storage facility located in Zone Four, and that the facility must have adequate room to store all impounded vehicles. These are mandatory requirements, not preferences. If you look at the pictures provided to you, you'll see that Car Cab wrecker and impound you'll see that Car Cab Wrecker Services' storage facility and yard is almost completely full with approximately 250 vehicles. The average volume of impounded vehicles in Zone 4 is 20 cars per day. This equates to 620 cars a month for just one zone. It's clear from the picture provided to you that was taken on November the 16th, 2025, Car Cab does not have adequate space to store those vehicles as required in the RFP. Under the City of Oklahoma City's purchasing policies and procedural manuals, a proposal that fails to meet the mandatory condition is a non-responsive bidder and must be rejected. It emphasizes the city must award contracts to responsive and responsible proposer whose submission is the most advantageous based strictly on the criteria in the RFP. Awarding this contract to a company whose facility is located in Zone 3 with insufficient storage space is a proper textbook example of accepting a non-responsive proposer. By overlooking Zone 4 location requirement, the city would be disadvantaging the compliant bidders who followed the rules in good faith. This exposes the city to bid protests, internal audits, contract reversal, and possible injunctive relief. The financial and operational impacts on the public are also significant.
30 seconds remaining.
I'm sorry? As Zone 3 wrecker service servicing Zone 4 will require longer travel distances, delayed service, and increased operational expenses. The public safety consequences must also be taken seriously. Police officers are tied up longer waiting on Zone 3 wreckers to respond to Zone 4. Fire department resources are held at scenes unnecessarily. Patrol units are pulled away from their assigned districts during minimum manning days. Increased risk to responders being on the side of the road longer. The request of the council is, within the next 14 days at the next scheduled City Council, many requests the selection committee select a responsive bidder from the original RFP who is physically located in Zone 4 and meets all mandatory requirements, including business located in Zone 4.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We're over time. Wanted to let you get that request out, and we've got your remarks here, too.
Thank you for your time.
Bert Woodring? Perhaps Bart? Probably Bert.
Bert Woodring, retired from, I guess, the towing business, but I guess I'm still involved in it. I sent the council and the mayor a letter. It was a previous protest letter. Anyway, I want to highlight four things about this deal. The minimum qualifications of the bid, to me, nobody met the minimum bids. I looked at the bid packets. The city sent them to me. I've looked at the criteria on the sheets where they bid, where they done the facts of the bid. Anyway, the intent of the bid is, of course, to have four wrecker services in four zones. That is the intent of the bid. It's in the city ordinance. Number two, the bids of the five applicants. After I reviewed the five applicants, only one applicant met the minimum requirements to even begin into the bid, and that was Metro Towing. The others did not meet the minimum qualifications. The criteria, the companies and the prospector violated federal law when they placed their bid by lying on their bid packet saying they had 15 drivers and they only had four in the bid packet that qualified. My final thing that I want to put across to the city is that on December the 31st, and I found that in the bid packet, Car Cab's bid says that their license was renewed with the state of Oklahoma on the 6th of January. And as it goes with the Highway Patrol, on the 31st of December, your licenses, if you don't renew them, is automatically canceled until you get your paperwork right to renew them. On the 31st of December, they send out notices to everybody through email that your license is about 5:15 in the evening, your license is going to be canceled. Until you get it straight, you're not able to tow cars. I have the email right here. So basically, two companies that work for the City of Oklahoma City, licenses were canceled. Morgan Towing and Car Cab Wrecker Service was canceled. Now Morgan Towing, the City of Oklahoma City, they unplugged him at midnight and says that you can't tow anymore for the city until you get your license straightened out.
30 seconds remaining.
Do what?
30 seconds left on your time.
Okay. So at that point, Car Cab's license was canceled for five and a half days, and he towed cars for the City of Oklahoma City, probably 40, 50 cars, maybe. And I don't know how that happened, and it was very strange to me that he continued to tow cars for the city even though his license was canceled at the state. And the state specifically says you cannot tow vehicles until you have a license. You do not have a license to tow a vehicle in the state of Oklahoma for the Highway Patrol, for Oklahoma City, for anybody.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
All right, yep.
Dr. Carlos Robinson?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, thank you so much for your time. Citizens, thank you so much for your time. My name is Dr. Carlos Robinson. I'm the president and CEO of the Oklahoma City Black Chamber of Commerce. Our mission is we empower black and minority-owned businesses and economic interests across central Oklahoma by sharing resources, building relationships, and advocating for equal opportunity and equitable outcomes. On October the 6th, I sent you all a letter with our full support in Metro Towing, being the representative for Zone 4. And many of these things have already been mentioned, but I will just highlight our position, which is set by three principles. Number one, zone-based service to protect the public. Number two, local facilities matter for safety, equity, and cost. Number three, the RFP criteria in the fair practice, it also states just all of these different things. So I'll kind of briefly go through them based off of the time. But when we're talking about number one, splitting up into four zones, that's an opportunity for faster response time, reduce police wait times, improve safety at the scene, and lower costs for the residents. Number two, when we go off into the local facilities that matter, we focus on a few things that we recognize. That slower response time, and I heard that it was addressed about the $4.99 per mile that would have been charged to the citizens, but it's still about the citizens going to pick their vehicles up way on the other side when it's a metro company right there in the middle. And then when we're talking about the fair practices and number three, it's big that, as I read through this RFP with Metro Towing as one of our chamber members, it's a lot of discrepancies across the board, and I don't need to repeat those, but we did identify some key things that stood out. And so what we really come to do is to support Metro Towing and Recovery as a qualified service company for Zone 4. We've looked at their things. We look at all of our members and their criteria on how they can serve. They came to us and they reached out to us, and we were able to verify that they are qualified.
30 seconds remaining.
And I just want to thank you all for your time. But the Oklahoma City Black Chamber of Commerce, we are in full support of Metro Towing and Recovery to service Zone 4, which is where most of our businesses are located from the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Azar Alzubi?
Right, City Mayor, Councilmember, Mayor David Hall, good morning. My name is Azar Alzubi. I'm the owner of Metro Towing and Recovery. I'm here to address the issue to reward the contract to Car Cab. Car Cab is already covering, have a contract to cover the southeast part of Oklahoma City. The intent of the bid was to have four wrecker service in four different zones. I have spent 1.5 million in my facility to be in northeast Oklahoma City. It's a very good location where we can be very responsive, very short time. However, given the, there's not any reason to justify to have Car Cab have this contract. We're fully prepared, staffed, and ready, and we're the only wrecker service in northeast Oklahoma City that have occupancy permit from the City of Oklahoma City to open wrecker service. And given two contracts to a single vendor, it does not show any fairness or equity or diversity in Oklahoma City. Oklahoma City is a great city. We have an awesome NBA team like Thunder, and the Olympics is coming soon. All this will increase the traffic in Oklahoma City. And it's very honored that we still have the intent, to maintain the intent of the bid to have four wrecker service in four different zones. And I think your great leadership up here will make the right thing for public safety and the city, the northeast Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Reed?
Hello. Thank you, City Council and Mayor. My name is Todd Reed. I'm at address 2613 Southwest 92nd Street, Oklahoma City. I guess I would like to address some of these things that are brought up with Car Cab Wrecker Service. I am Vice President of Car Cab Wrecker Service. Car Cab has been in business for about 40 years towing for the City of Oklahoma City with contracts. So we're not new to all the proceedings and stuff like that. We've been covering half of that zone now for about a year. And the big reason, as far as one of them they brought up, is time. Our response times have been considerably better, which I assume is why we were considered one of the best. So from a time point of view, you know, getting to the zone, getting to the incident, getting it back, and stuff like that. I mean, we have done a fabulous job in doing that. The other thing I heard was the 25, we didn't get our approval until January 6th. We actually submitted to DPS in mid to late October. I don't have that exact number. But it takes DPS time to get through everything, kind of like I've already submitted for my 26th, but I still don't have all my packets and everything back. DPS was considerably shorthanded back then also, so the time was kind of understandable. But I think we would do a great job in providing those services. We've been providing the services to the City of Oklahoma City for a long time, and the Zone 3. And again, we've been providing services to half of Zone 4 already for a year now. So it's not, it's not any undertaking that we're not ready to rise to the occasion. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, that concludes those who've signed up to speak. I think, is there also an amendment on this?
Yes, there is an amendment that was recommended to add the contingency time period to be able to get in compliance and get. I think at this point, Kalia, if I'm not mistaken, there's, they just need one more driver certified to be in full compliance for serving Ward or Zone 4.
Correct. They have 15.
And this would give them until January?
January 30th of 2026, but according to an email from DPS yesterday, they expect to have two more certified within the next three days.
So that's a floor amendment that would add that contingency.
Okay. Well, while we're on the topic-
Can we send this back to the committee then, since we've had so many arguments and things that aren't lining up with this RFP to have them reevaluate and bring it back to us more in whole?
I think with the questions that are here at this point, it's my recommendation and staff's recommendation to move forward with this, with that contingency. I think if you didn't want to move forward, I think basically what you do is you'd vote against it. If you vote against it and it wasn't approved, if the contract wasn't approved, my recommendation at this point would not be to go back. It would be to start over. To start the process. Again, there's just some questions that were there that I think can be clarified. So our recommendation is to move forward. I think there's a plan to move forward and serve this area. But if you vote against that, I'll work with staff and we'll decide what our next steps would be. So that would be options that we would have, and I would want to make sure that I work with staff on that.
All right. Well, can we pull that for a separate vote, please?
Yes. And so to clarify for Councilman Carter and others, like the mechanism to start over is just to vote no?
That's right.
So I just, I think it would be great, and I appreciate everyone being here to comment. And I'll start my comments by saying, I have no reason to believe that Car Cab is not a great wrecker service, so I don't want my comments to be construed as being against them or their operation. I'm sure they do perfectly fine work. My concern is about our process. So if we are saying in the RFP, and I respect the, I think that our legal counsel, Kalia, does an excellent job. So it is not a criticism of her legal interpretation of what she provided, because I know it is on point. My question is about the fact that the RFP clearly says it's a preference for you being able to operate, having a space in the zone, and having the staffing necessary to operate in the zone. It seems odd to me that the city would then make the choice to select someone that doesn't substantially comply with the two most critical things you need in order to execute in the zone. Having space to store the cars or vehicles that you're towing and having sufficient number of drivers. It just seems so strange to me that we would reach that conclusion. And I'm hoping, City Manager, you can kind of explain the logic behind that, because we're literally going to award the contract to someone who at this point can't substantially perform according to our own criteria, and that just seems counter to the way that we've done business.
Yeah.
Can I interrupt real quick, if you don't mind?
Sure.
But, you know, there was a couple of months ago where I deferred an item, where we were, I think we were terminating an agreement with the wrecker service for some reason. It was something similar to that, right? And I'd been reached out and deferred it, and I appreciated everyone supporting my deferral until I dug into the weeds a little bit. And what I figured out that I wasn't typically aware of is the biggest decision maker on that is the performance of that company. If they're located two extra miles away, fine. If they have fantastic performance, then that's the reason that they either decide not to go with someone or they decide to go with someone. And what they were talking about there was really in terms of, think about, you have an auto accident, right? And it's blocking some traffic. And to sit there and wait for two hours, or have the officer just sitting there for two hours, a fire truck sitting there two hours, waiting on the wrecker to come, that's their biggest decision making in the thing. And so, I don't know. Personally, I'm agreeing to move forward, you know, especially with the understanding we have on the legal side of things and the performance, right? It isn't like they haven't been performing in that section, because they have for the last year, at least half of it. And evidently, they're doing a great job. Otherwise, I can tell you the committee would have said, eh, no. So that's just my thoughts on it.
And I think it's a fair question. There's question on this of like, you know, what we've said is specifically, you know, it, the intent would be that you have someone to serve in that zone, and you're able to do that. They've indicated their intent to do that, but I think the performance was there in demonstrating the ability to serve. And so making sure that we had an ability to ensure that they would move forward and be able to serve within that zone, and until that time, be willing to waive that fee. That's why we further clarified that. And so it's the reasonable questions that are on here, but I felt like we had a good path forward to be able to provide the services in a way that's already being provided now.
So my concern is the optics, the procedure aspects. We set up the parameters of this RFP, and then we decide to award it to someone and amend the RFP to fit that person instead of that person fitting the RFP. I think it's a much better option for us to send it back. Our council struck this completely.
Right.
Redo what our requirements are if we're wanting that to be that way so that we don't set ourselves up for setting precedents in any other play. This has got, I mean, we can't bend this just to fit somebody.
And I'll add to, I agree with Councilman Carter, but I'll also add to that, it seems like you get an advantage in this process by being an existing wrecker service. Because if performance is, which makes sense to me. It's logical to think performance should matter in how you make the final determination. But if I don't have an existing contract, if I'm already an outsider, how do I prove that I can also perform at the same level? It seems like that gives an advantage to an existing contractor. That's unfair to me. Again, it's legal, yes. Is it fair and clear from our RFP process that we're giving all applicants an opportunity to compete? It doesn't feel like we have been. And so again, I agree with Councilman Carter. I think we ought to send it back and get clarity. And if the idea is that you don't have to have property in the zone, you don't have to meet the requirements of having the-
I'm not going to also discount that when someone's serving. So it's 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 fair that we don't want to be unreasonable with this, but if you're serving us and serving us well, it is going to be something that we're we're going to take into consideration when we evaluate a proposal. But I but I understand where you are.
And I would just add that from a logistics standpoint, performance is crucial. And it's, I mean, it's very easy to not meet those performance requirements. Takes a lot of work to hit those performance requirements. And if you hit them, you hit them. I don't know. Just an additional thought. Thank you.
Can I ask, were you gonna say something? So if the process were to begin again, what specific lang, I don't know if we would have the specific language, but what what kind of parameters would we be crafting there regarding, I mean, because you're hearing, I mean, performance to Counselor Stone's comments really matters, but then, you know, this lack of clarity about preference versus requirement, like, do we have an idea of what direction that we're wanting to hear?
Yeah, I think that would be our job to clarify that. I've I've heard what's been said here. And what I said about going back to start over, I just think what I've heard and seen in this, that would make more sense. I would, if you all don't approve the contract today, go back with staff, with the team that worked on this, and make sure that we all agree with that, and that being a path going forward. Just sitting here with what I've seen so far, I think it makes sense and the comments that have been made. And we'd already looked at a few things that we said, next time we go out for an RFP, whether it was on this one or the next time, that there are some things that we would want to clarify because of questions that have been raised.
Thank you.
And I want to make something clear, too, if I could. Whether we vote this contract down today and we go back, we're not leaving Zone 4 without service and without any kind of help. They will continue doing what they do within the current contract. We're just not approving the forward moving contract, correct?
Currently, right, currently, we still have Car-Cab. We have to use an approved vendor.
Right.
So we have Car-Cab that serves part of the area, and then we have Arrow that serves the other part. We would continue with that, being able to serve that area, so it wouldn't leave the area without service.
Just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Can I clarify, because I feel like there have been a few statements made where, like, I'm hearing something that maybe someone has more information than I do. But so as far as like being able to prove performance, how do we evaluate that for someone who's like a new, a potential new vendor? If they don't have like a track record with the city, is there a way that like through their other services they provided to other customers? Like, how do we capture that?
It's different in each each RFP that we do, but when we do an RFP, it's subjective. People are using their judgment in looking at this. Generally, what we'll do is ask for demonstration of services that you've provided previously. We'll ask for demonstration of equipment and staff in a case like this to be able to serve. So you're evaluating.
Capacity.
The capacity that's there, and and any demonstration that could be provided on the fact that you've provided a similar service to this. It's, this is, this is a pretty heavy service, like we call on this a lot. And so I think it's something that's important as we're looking at that, to take that into consideration. But it is subjective. You've got to sit down with staff and look and go, okay, I know someone's doing this and I've seen them work. Over here, I've got it on paper. Hopefully, it's like demonstrated through customers they've served, or demonstrated through how long they've been in business and serving an area. So you're looking at those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
So I don't know if anyone wants to make a motion on the amendment. Perhaps that's moot. You also don't have to move the item. You can move to strike the item.
I'll make a motion.
To move the amendment?
To add the amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. We'll do that then.
Sorry. The amendment is adding the contingency that it will, they've got until January 30th to be in full compliance. They're in substantial compliance, but to be, they'd have until January 30th to be in full compliance, and they wouldn't take over the service full for the full area until they meet that. And as Kalia suggested, the DPS has indicated, within the next three days, they should have that, if it were approved.
And so the amendment, again, is just modifying the contract.
That's correct.
That we go to a vote on the whole thing.
That's all it's doing.
Just want to clarify that for the audience.
Okay. So this is a motion for the amendment as just described. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes when you have that opportunity. Passes six to three. Okay? Now, the item is amended, and we've had a request for a separate vote. We can have any, you know, any number of different motions made here, so whoever speaks up verbally first will be the one who wins.
Wait. Click.
He's making a motion. Well, I, we'll let you say what you're gonna say again, Bradley, because you already said it, what your motion is.
My motion is that we vote separately on this and we basically.
Not a motion, no motion necessary for that. We're gonna vote separately. But you wish to move passage of the of the item?
No.
That's that's why I'm making it clear that there are different kinds of motions that can be made.
Yeah, no, I had requested that we move this.
You can move to deny the item. You can move to strike the item.
Motion to passage.
All right, we have a motion for passage.
That's what this vote is.
That's what this vote is. It's the first clear motion I've heard, so that's what.
Right.
This is, yes. Yes, if you want to pass it as amended, no. If you do not, which will have the net effect of starting.
Going back to quote.
Okay. We have a motion. We are waiting a second. Going once, going twice, motion dies for lack of a second. Is there a different motion that someone would like to make?
I moved to deny.
What would be the right, maybe maybe motion to strike? I think motion to strike in this case. You don't really deny a contract, I guess. So motion to strike is another thing somebody could do. Okay, here we go. We have a motion. We are waiting a second. There it is. Second on a motion to strike this item as amended. Item 9C. Cast your votes. So if you are voting yes, you're voting to strike the item. Passes eight to one. All right, the item is struck, and as I understand it, the City Manager and his team will get back to work.
Yes.
All right, we'll move on now to item AT. Councilman Cooper, you had some comment on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Less comments. I just would like to hear a little bit more about what this item is gonna do, largely because I hear from residents asking about safety around schools. So I don't know who might might come to the podium to speak on it. Oh, and there's our Public Works Director.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Good morning. Debbie Miller, Public Works Director. This item is to provide funding to provide for A and E services, to provide the locations for the school zones. This is a ACOG safety project, so the construction is 100% funded, and this is just for us to develop the plans.
So I'm seeing that there's like the, to either install or remove school zone and traffic feedback signs at multiple locations. Do we have any sense of those locations, or are we talking citywide everywhere? What does this look like? Because when I look at the amount of funding.
It's citywide. It's citywide, and that's why we're having a consultant to help us with the locations that need to be upgraded.
Okay. When would we learn about those locations?
There would be a preliminary report that will come to council for you guys to approve.
Okay. Is that good for you? Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that work.
Okay. That brings us to item AZ, which Councilwoman Avers requested a separate vote. And so someone can make a motion just on this item.
We did have a presentation.
Oh, we have a presentation. I'm sorry. Also have a presentation.
Kenny Soodle with the Alliance for Economic Development has been working on this with the city of Yukon. We've communicated with council previously on this. Wanted to make sure we get an update here and then address that, the concerns.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Kenny Soodle with the Alliance for Economic Development. So this was something, gosh, it's been probably 10, 11 months ago, were approached by the city of Yukon, and they had some different things and concerns and things they were interested in. As we looked at, there were some things Oklahoma City might be interested in, and out of, out of a, you know, spirit of cooperation, tried to work through some things that might be a benefit to both communities. You know, one thing I do want to take a moment to say is just, sometimes in the past, there's been, you know, things where different cities are protectionist against, you know, their own interests, and I think that's valid, and we should continue to look at our own interests. But I do think, you know, it's worth saying that from a regional perspective, we want economic development, we want advancement to happen with our suburbs as well. I think when our suburbs are strong, it helps Oklahoma City and the region be strong. So hopefully, this was something we could bring forward that would be beneficial to both communities and sort of set the stage for some benefit. Briefly, we'll walk through, the parties on this are the city of Oklahoma City and the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust, because these were some of the parties on some previous agreements on a piece of the property, which I'm gonna go through each part of this. The city of Yukon and the Yukon Municipal Authority. Again, those are the entities that are involved on some pieces of property that are in this agreement. Basically, to sum it up, Oklahoma City desires to annex, have de-annexed from Yukon and annexed into Oklahoma City, a parcel around I-40 and Gregory Road that is owned currently by an Oklahoma City Trust, and it's it's part of our mega site that we have been assembling in the past year or so. Yukon also desires to amend, there's an agreement on a piece of property at Frisco Road, just north of I-40, that was part of a de-annexation from Oklahoma City in the past, and there were some restrictions for revenue and development that were placed on that. And then also, there's two small parcels that are currently in Oklahoma City that are on Yukon Parkway, just east of Yukon High School, about 20 acres there, that really are kind of difficult to develop from Oklahoma City standpoint. There's not infrastructure, but it's something Yukon would be interested in having developed. And we'll, so we'll kind of walk through each of those pieces. So the first piece, this is the parcel we mentioned, that currently this is in the city of Yukon. It is owned by an Oklahoma City Trust. It's part of, you know, right next to CE Page Airport. Under this agreement, under item AZ, what it would require would be that Yukon would de-annex this property and that Oklahoma City would immediately annex. And I should back up and say, this agreement, if passed, and it has already been passed by city of Yukon, so it's really in Oklahoma City's court now, it, if all the provisions of the things don't happen, because it would require further actions, you know, going through the de-annexation and annexation processes, if any of those don't happen, then basically all the previous restrictions just revert back to the properties. So this would also, on this piece of property, if it were de-annexed from Yukon and annexed into Oklahoma City, would also not have any restrictions. I want to point this out, because this was part of kind of the negotiations of, as we're gonna hear about on the piece of property that's currently in Yukon, you know, there are some restrictions Oklahoma City had placed on that property. So this was one of the asks was, well, in order to have no restrictions on this property, they wanted some of them released on this other piece. So we'll go to the next slide. So this is, this piece of property was a subject of some agreements from 2015 that was then modified in 2023, and this was part of a property that was de-annexed out of Oklahoma City in the past. It's in the city of Yukon, but currently, there's a bunch of restrictions on the uses, and it's also, if they were ever to develop it, they would have to share the sales tax for 15 years with the city of Oklahoma City. Under this agreement, in exchange for de-annexing the other property and having no restrictions on it, Oklahoma City would remove that sales tax sharing component on here. However, we would leave one restriction here. They would be able to do other types of development, industrial development, some smaller retail development, but it would remain a restriction against what is called no retail shopping centers, which that's defined as shopping centers would have 125,000 square feet of gross leasable space, big box type of retailers, et cetera. So it would free up the revenue sharing, you know, which would be a benefit to Yukon, but it would not impose anything on our piece if it were annexed in, but it would leave the restriction on the sort of big box retailers here. And then lastly, these are the other two pieces of property, which are about 20 acres that were currently in Oklahoma City on Yukon Parkway, and it would just require that those be de-annexed from Oklahoma City and then Yukon to immediately annex those. And again, would have, these would have no restrictions on, you know, what type of development that would really then fall to Yukon to make a determination. That is basically the crux of this agreement. You know, this was something that, again, Yukon approached us on. We began having dialogue and back and forth, and, you know, if there are any questions, we happy to answer. Tried to lay this out on a map, you know, these are all kind of in the same area, but be happy to answer any questions.
And Kenny, to clarify, too, this doesn't, I mean, we would still have a process that we go through for the de-annexation. This is just putting the general agreement in place of how we would proceed.
Yes, this would be, kind of as I mentioned earlier, it would, this agreement, if passed, and it's been passed by the other party, if passed by this party, by the city of Oklahoma City, it would just require that both cities begin those processes. Those processes have to go through all the normal public processes, public approvals, et cetera. So there there would be multiple things that would happen in both cities. And back to, I believe, you know, the agreement states that if those things do not happen, those restrictions sort of revert back on on the property that's in Yukon right now, the one at Frisco Road.
So those 20 acres that we're looking at de-annexing, what ward is that in?
It is your ward, I believe.
Just chisel away.
I do. On that note, so what, what's the net annex de-annexation for OKC here?
So this agreement, as it stands, the net would be OKC would receive 150 acres and would lose 20 acres. So it'd be a net of about 130 for this agreement. However, if you kind of look at it over time, you know, the Yukon piece was 184 acres that we de-annexed, but it was some years ago. But technically, this agreement would be a net add.
So the portion that's north of I-40 there, that's in the middle, that portion was done previously.
Yeah, it it was done previously, it was already de-annexed, but it it, that was about 184 and a half acres.
Right.
So I would like to make the motion to defer it to the December, December 2nd meeting, so just two weeks. I have a meeting with Kenny today at 2:00 to resolve a couple of questions I have. In principle, though, I love the idea of this, the spirit of community and really doing something that's good for not just us, but for our neighboring cities as well. So thank you for putting this together and thanks for a great briefing. So I have a motion to defer to December 2nd.
Is there anything we're unaware of that would that would be problematic about?
No, from Oklahoma City's side, we don't have anything, any time pressure on this. This is something where, you know, I think would be beneficial to us long term. There's no prospects there or anything imminent. I think any pressure would be on the Yukon side, but I don't know that there's, I don't know if there's any pressure on that.
I checked on both sides. Their next council meeting is 12. So we're good.
Okay. All right. So if there's no other comments or questions, we could take up that motion to defer item AZ for two weeks. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. Item is deferred. Thank you. He can come now. All right. When you come out during the vote, then you have to vote. That takes us to B N. Councilwoman Avers, you wanted to speak to this?
I just wanted to get a quick presentation.
So if there's no other comments or questions, we could take up that motion to defer item AZ for two weeks. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. All right. Item is deferred. Thank you. He can come now. Sorry, when you come out during the vote, then you have to vote. All right. That takes us to B N. Councilwoman Avers, you wanted to speak to this?
I just wanted to get a quick presentation from David Todd on, on what's going on in this, on this particular project.
Right. So David Todd, MAPS Program Manager. This, this contract was originally approved by this body before the implementation plan was revised. If you recall, the implementation plan revision added $100 million to the, to the MAPS program from the collections. This, this contract includes both South Lakes and Cameron Park. And it's for all the engineering on there. We're just compensating them for an additional, about $3.6 million that was seen from that, that revision in the implementation plan. And then also, with the bond money that's going to be used at Cameron also. And then also, we asked them to split it into two pieces, two projects, instead of bidding it all as one, so that it, smaller firms could be more competitive and we could manage it that way. So this is actually kind of late. We should have, we should have done this earlier, after we did the revision to the implementation plan.
Okay. Was it on this one or a different one tied to Cameron and South Lakes, where I saw the contract was requesting an additional amount of significant value, several hundred thousand dollars? Is that tied to this specific, is that why we're asking for more? Or is it because we've given, we've put more into the project? Or is it because the project is asking for more for a specific amendment?
It's because we added more to the project and increased the amount that they're designing.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. That concludes all of the items on our weighty consent docket today. So we can now adopt that which remains. Some things have been struck, some things have been deferred, but what is left, we can take with one vote. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. Item 10 is the concurrence docket, and we have items A through N we could take with one motion. The motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. Now we are on item 11, Items for Individual Consideration. Item 11A is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 1100 East Reno from I-3 to I-1. Councilman Pennington, no one has signed up to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we're adding a hotel, is what it looks like, which is going to be great, as we are hosting the Olympics in Oklahoma City in Ward 7. And so I'm very excited to hear that. I don't have any questions. If there's no one signed up to speak, I'm ready to move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item B was previously deferred. Item C is got a few items here relative to a rezoning of 14900 North Mustang Road from AA to PUD 2086. There's a couple of amendments. This was deferred from October 21st. And Councilman Carter, we have four people who have signed up to speak, and at least two are in opposition.
Okay. Representative?
Caitlin. If you can kind of just give us a brief overview of everything that's going on, and then we'll listen to the citizens who have signed up.
Yeah, absolutely. Caitlin Turner, 525 Northwest 11th Street, here on behalf of the applicant, who is also here with me. So I'll first show you all the site plan that we're proposing. So what we're proposing here is going to be predominantly single-family residential lots. And then we also have a small portion designated in the southwest to a maximum of 17 duplex lots. We do have 7,500 square foot lots along the north and along the west. And then we also have some pretty significant buffers along the north, the west, and the south. So we've got about 88 feet of green space along the north, 23 feet on the west, 50 feet on the south. Within this, you see this red line here that's going to be caliper, excuse me, three-inch caliper trees planted on 25-foot centers. That was some verbiage that was, we had assistance with from our trustee landscape architect, Planning Commissioner Claire. And then we also have street trees that will have to do along Mustang Road. So in sum, we have residential development, we have some buffers and some landscaping baked in to kind of protect from the neighborhood to the north. You'll hear some comments from the neighborhood to the north, just about density and about those buffers. So I also would like to briefly point out some of the surrounding area and the surrounding zoning that's been approved here recently. So the development to the north predates the water sewer extension to this area. Now that that water sewer is available, and we have the urban low intensity comprehensive plan designation, we have this PUD 2068 that was just, went into effect August 2025, that's going to allow for some duplex lots, as well as 40 to 50-foot lots. So that's just abutting us to the east. And then we also have this PUD 1851, abutting the neighborhood to the north. That's going to be 5,000 square foot lots. And then we also have some R1 and some higher density, you know, R1 developments in this area. So the trajectory of this area is trending towards this higher density residential. Our proposal with the cap, with the maximum of the duplex lots, with the buffers, with the screening, and then with the 7,500 square foot lots on the north and the west, we believe this to be one of the lowest density out of some of those new zoning designations surrounding it. We're at about 2.81 dwelling units per acre. Comprehensive plan is about four to eight dwelling units per acre. And then immediately east is a little over five dwelling units per acre. So our proposal, again, with the neighbors in mind, based on the community meeting, we've worked out some of those revisions to protect them. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have, but we believe that, you know, this complies with the comp plan. We have a recommendation of approval from both staff and planning commission, and I'm happy to answer any questions or address any comments.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Can we just listen to the, the citizens next, please?
Certainly. Kelly Work?
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Kelly Work. My address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304. And I am here on behalf of a group of homeowners who live within the Greenwood neighborhood, which is located directly north across Northwest 150th Street, and is comprised of residential tracts that are five acres in size or larger. I would like to show just briefly the, an aerial photo that I think gives you, gives you a sense of the character of this area. This photo is from about, from about 18 months ago in May of 2024. The subject property is 160 acres. You can see it located there in the center of the photo. And directly north, you see the, what is the Greenwood neighborhood that has been there for many decades. And so there, and of course, the access is all off of Mustang Road, which is to the west of both the subject property and the Greenwood neighborhood. The, we are opposing the proposed PUD. It, Greenwood includes the entire quarter section to the north and then part of the quarter section to the north of that as well. The proposed PUD 2086 would allow 421 single-family residential lots, along with 17 duplex lots, for a total of 455 residential units. And that would amount to a dramatic and abrupt contrast in density from what exists in this area today. The Greenwood neighborhood retains very much a rural residential character, and this proposed density with this development directly adjacent to it would be not compatible, in our view, with the established character of the area. It would cause significantly increase the traffic volume on streets that are designed for rural scale use. And the volumes, the traffic volumes that would be generated by this proposed development would overwhelm the streets that are not designed for urban density. What the Oklahoma City Comprehensive Plan says for, for this area, it is within the urban low intensity area. It calls for residential subdivisions that are larger in scale, as this one is, to provide a diversity of lot sizes, density ranges, and home sizes. This proposed PUD does not do that. A transition could be provided, in our view, with larger lots provided along the north and south boundary, boundaries, that would make it more compatible. And also, in our view, there is a lack of adequate buffering and not what you would expect to see for a large subdivision development, as is proposed here. We do have some specific changes that we propose be made to the PUD that we think would make it less incompatible. The first is to lower the density of residential lots by providing a graduated density, both on the north and the south. On the south of this subject property is a single residential lot on 160 acres. Second, to provide a transition zone of larger lots along the north boundary and the south boundary, we suggest the duplex lots be eliminated. We would suggest that the screening wall that has been set out in the master design statement, both along the north and south boundary, be a minimum six-foot-high brick or stone wall, and that there should be an enhanced landscape buffer on the north side, along the west side, and on the south perimeters, which we think would be appropriate for a residential development of this size, specifying the specific landscaping materials that would be included. There are easements along the north boundary and along the west boundary, and actually along the south boundary. So they, there, there's very limited language in the PUD with respect to landscaping materials that would be provided, and we think that needs to be changed. Without those changes, as presently proposed, we would ask that you deny PUD 2086. We have indicated to the applicant, these requested changes, we're certainly open to attempt to work with them if they would be willing to try to reach some resolution. I appreciate your attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. All right. Next up, Glenn Harris.
I'm not familiar with your process, but I have a handout that I'd like to have passed.
Whatever.
I'd like to reserve my time until you folks have looked at that and read it. It's quite brief.
I don't think we're going to be able to do that, but go ahead and start.
I'll wait till you've read it. It's a remain to my presentation.
Okay. Well, we're going to take it off your time then.
Fine.
We'll run the clock.
First of all, I'd like to compliment David Box. I'm a retired CEO, and I haven't seen someone take down a planning commission so effectively in such a short amount of time. The guy, if I, well, next time I do a $10 million or 10 million square foot development, I'll probably hire him. So effectively, we've been blocked from negotiating directly with the developers by the, the process here, and it's forced us into a position where we're likely to have to file a lawsuit against the city. And would not be frivolous. It would be simply giving you guys some time to fix the flood plan issues, perhaps have a reasonable negotiation, get with FEMA, get the maps updated, rebuild Mustang Road so it could possibly be safe for the amount of traffic you're thinking, get with the school board, not the superintendent, and listen to the school board's concerns about the number of additional students in the area. So 100% of the residents in this area are against this. And we would like, as your banner says outside, we would like service, please. Thank you.
Just to be clear, we have a process for people to file protests. You said 100% of residents are opposed. I see no protests at all, actually. Is this correct, council?
They're in your packet?
What it's not, it doesn't meet the threshold, I guess, for higher votes, right? It's, which 100% clearly would.
It's in here. If there are protests, what's in here?
Okay. But it's, I mean, whatever percentage it is, it didn't make the agenda, so it must not be 100. I just want to make that clear. Because that's a, that's a, it's a legal phrase of art when somebody says we have 100% protests on this. We do not have 100% protests. In fact, we don't have...
And Bradley, if you do what you say you're going to do, when you say you're going to do it, for the amount you say you're going to do it for, you get a C. And buddy, this time you got an F.
Doesn't seem like that's going to help this, your, your cause. But all right. Next up is Leslie Doyle.
My name is Leslie Doyle. I live at 11201 Northwest 150th Street, Piedmont, Oklahoma, which is directly across from this proposed development. I have been hired, not hired, I have been requested by our, both my neighbors and the neighbors in the Greenwood addition to speak on their behalf. Several of them are going to come today, but one husband's died and a couple are in the hospital. So I was going to speak about the potential development surrounding the area. Kelly Work was perfect in what he has said to what our concerns are. One thing that I'd like to say is that Mr. Box will tell you that they have decreased the density of the homes. The first PUD that was submitted in July, there are 369 homes and 67 duplexes. This last PUD, they're saying there's 421 homes and 17 duplexes. We, as, as a community, as a neighborhood, can't figure out how that's an endless development. Caitlin said that you, they have agreed to give us a 7,500 square foot lots on the north side and the west side of the development, and conceded to do 17 duplexes instead of the 16, instead of the 67. They may be losing approximately $45,960 in profit from that. What I'm losing, and what my neighbors and I are losing, is giving up a million-dollar view, peace, and serenity. And then Mr. Box will say, and the developer has agreed to put in the fence and extra landscaping. The developer is required by the City of Oklahoma City subdivision regulations to install a fence around the subdivision. And as for the landscaping, okay, the developer's going to be out $10,000. But will that replace the open view of the beautiful field, the wildlife, that we have all enjoyed for an average of 35 years? Absolutely not. In conclusion, as a spokeswoman for the Greenwood addition, we respectfully request that this PUD be denied. I still have three minutes of time left, of which...
You have one minute left, just to...
Oh, I'll go real fast then.
You start with three. Go ahead.
I started great, but I'm slowing down here. I would like to point out that you, as councilmen, are here to represent your constituents. And when you say you're going to schedule a meeting with the applicant's attorney, you do it. You don't throw your assistant under the bus saying, well, he was supposed to do that and he went on vacation. It was your job to set up the meeting. And when you, as councilmen, meet with the other applicant's attorneys, please be sure that you reread your emails and text messages that you send out in regards to that meeting. The email that we received did not represent what was said at all in that meeting with Mr. Box. And the response we got with, for why was your email wrong, it was said, and I quote, "I was talking and texting my email, and I didn't proofread what I wrote before I pressed send." This shows a total lack of professionalism. And I won't go into other things that I would like to say, do, because I'm probably at 30 seconds. But you all are in a spot to present integrity and accountability and professionalism. And I hope that sticks in the back of your mind. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That concludes the citizens who've signed up to speak. Bradley, I think you're a great guy, just for the record. Go ahead. Your floor is yours.
There's a lot I really want to say at this moment, but I'm not going to. We do have a tough job, and there's a lot of... We do have a tough job, and there's a lot of things that we have to look at, and there's a lot of things we have to evaluate. Although concessions were made, some people did not believe that they were good enough. Those, you know, they have their own opinion, they're welcome to it. There's other residents that were happy with the concessions that were made, and so was I. In a situation like this, when you own the property and you're going to develop the property, and it fits our comprehensive plan, it fits everything that was lined out whenever someone is looking to be a developer, it goes before our planning commission, which is the first line. It has been reviewed, it has been done by our planning and zoning, it meets everything and exceeds, and as Ms. Turner brought up earlier, it'll be one of the lesser dens in this area. I can understand not wanting development in this area. I, I live in this area. I moved out there to get away from the city, so to speak, but yet still have access to the city. But the city's moving and growing, and we're welcoming people every single day. And we have to meet those needs, and I'm sorry that this is going to potentially ruin a view. But we've also made plans within our new geo-bond initiative, and this is one of the roads that we're going to be widening and taking care of and resurfacing. So, it's going to help with that traffic that they're concerned about. So, with that, I will move for approval.
Before we go, Caitlin, can you show us again the map of what is coming to that area, as opposed to Kelly's map of just the raw land?
Yeah, absolutely. You're referring to the zoning that's surrounding it?
The upcoming properties that are surrounding it. It's real hard to see.
Yeah, so this is PUD 2068. This just went into effect August of this year. So, this is going to be, we have about 20 acres of duplexes, and then some 40- and 50-foot lots in this property immediately to the east. PUD 1851 is a PUD for 5,000-square-foot lots that immediately abuts the property to the north. And then we also have the R1 zoning. PUD 1992 is going to be R1 with, I think, some modifications to lot size as well, and then the R1 to the south here.
Thank you.
I can get closer if you'd like. Okay.
Actually, Mayor, I want to retract, because we need to vote on the amendment to the master design first, so.
All right. All right, so we got C1 is your first motion, I presume?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Next up would be C2, if that is your wish, councilman.
Yes, sir.
This is another amendment to the master design statement, but this time it's C2. It says C1, but I think we under, it's being recorded correctly. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then C3 is the ordinance on final hearing for PUD 2086. We have a motion and a second. This is C3, not C1, as it says. Cast your votes. Oh, is it scroll down? Interesting. Okay, very good. Passes eight to one. All right, thank you. All right, item D is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 800 South Sayer Road from O1, O2, I1, and I2 to PUD 2092. Councilwoman Nevers, no one has signed up to speak.
We, there was a community meeting, and modifications were made, and the neighbors were accepting, and so we are making a motion to approve today.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for item D. Cast your votes. Item E is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 13945 North Portland from R1 to PUD 2094. Councilman Stonecypher, there is one person who's signed to speak. I don't know their position.
It's Mr. Munson?
Yes.
All right. Yes. This application is to allow mixed-use commercial and entertainment district, commercial and multifamily residential uses are proposed in track one, and residential development is proposed in track two. I'd like to say that Tim Munson is here today. He's the president of Remington Homeowners Association. I deal with him on the phone from time to time. I've dealt with him in meetings. He is always thoroughly prepared. He came together with the developer. They sat down and talked and had productive talks, and so I'm going to turn it over to Caitlin at this time to talk about an amendment that's been approved by Mr. Munson, and you want to raise your hand? All right, there we go. Thanks for being here.
Good morning. Caitlin Turner, 525 Northwest 11th Street. So, the amendment that was discussed and agreed to is going to amend Section 9.4 regarding screening regulations. So, that verbiage is now going to read for that first paragraph. "No less than an eight-foot wall shall be required along the west boundary of track two where adjacent to existing single-family residential. Said wall shall be constructed entirely of stucco, brick, stone, or other masonry/ cementitious site or material, including precast, and shall be solid and opaque. Wall materials shall be provided at the final plat stage and shall be required to be constructed prior to any certificate of occupancy being granted." So, that is the amendment.
Sounds good? Great.
Great, thank you.
The amendment that was just read into the record.
All right. So, we will take a vote on the amendment as just described to item E. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
And now I'd move to approve the amended 11E, please.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for the amended item E. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay.
Thank you, Tim.
Oh, wait, and it's okay that Tim did not get to speak. I sort of forgot about him for a second. Was he for or against? Mark?
He's four.
He's four? Okay, then, then I...
Do you want to speak?
I... Mr. Mayor, City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Tim Munson, 4316 Northwest 143rd Street, Oklahoma City. As Mark stated, I'm the president of the Remington Homeowners Association, and that's the development immediately abutting this PUD. I'd like to thank Mark and Katrina for helping me work with Tim and Mark and the developer and coming to agreement on a best-case scenario for everybody. The one thing that I would like to make the council aware of is that while I'm supportive of this, of this effort and this development, I think that it's imperative that each and every one of you pay very, very close attention to what is going to happen as a result of this. This is going to put significant pressure on the traffic situation at the intersection of 150th and Portland, and Memorial and Portland. We've had discussions. I know there's an ongoing study with DOT. I would just ask that you all be very, very much on point about this, because there are already an inordinate number of accidents at 150th and Portland, and I think there may be some discussions down the road of potentially lowering the speed limit on 150th. I would be in support of that. But there is going to be, the plan calls for over 4,300 parking spots in this, in this development, and each and every one of those cars is going to get into that development through 150th and Portland on arterial feeder that feeds from the north to the south. And then everybody that leaves that development is going to go through the intersection at Memorial and, and that arterial on Portland. So, I know there's going to be a lot of other things come down the road. I support, I mean, I appreciate Mark's support and Katrina's support. I just wanted to make that statement, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just so everybody knows, when this first came about, W. Miller was instrumental in reaching out to ODOT, and they've got a consultant taking a look at this. We've got traffic taking a look at this, lowering the speed limit, and some other options that the developer is helping us with. So, we, we know we need to stay vigilant and on top of this, and that's what we're doing right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item F is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 12901 North Cemetery Road from AA to PUD 2097. Councilman Carter.
Has anyone signed up to speak?
They have not.
Okay. Then, subject to the summary from the planning commission, I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. 11G, one and two are related. Two is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 8901 North Coltrane from AA to PUD 2098. Item G1 is an amendment to the master design statement. Councilman Pennington, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just to add two additional single-family homes to this lot, and I will move approval.
I'm going to take that as a motion for the amendment, approval of G1.
First, I move the amendment, Mayor.
I'll see. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Now, I'd like to move approval of the item.
Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay, 11H is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 13415 North Bryant from PUD 1533 to PUD 2099. No one has signed up to speak. Councilman Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to create some more mixed-use development and some townhomes as well, so glad to see some more housing in Oklahoma City. I'm going to move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay, item A is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 2200 Northwest 33rd from R1 to SPD 1777. Councilman Cooper, no one has signed up to speak.
Is the applicant present, though? Would, oh, good, we met online, well, we meet online, but we met virtually. Would you all mind telling us a little bit about your project? I'm excited about it. It's just, yeah, tell us a little, tell us your name, these sorts of things.
Yeah, Joseph and Hadley Miller. So, we're the owners of the property at 2200 Northwest 33rd, and essentially, what we're proposing here is to build a duplex property on the back half of the lot, so maintaining the existing structure and facing that duplex out towards North Barnes.
I just, I really appreciate this info, figuring out ways to provide housing there in the urban core, and not demolishing that, that front structure. So, I just really appreciate you both, and we'll keep you updated as we keep doing some more of this work and see if there's ways for you all to continue to be involved with this. I would move for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay, item J is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 8728 North Chertel from R1 to SPD 1779. Councilman Cooper, no one has signed up to speak.
Is the applicant here to maybe speak on it, though? No? Yes? Cool. Well, I have once more had a virtual meeting on this one as well, and I would move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item K is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, closing portions of private access drives and public utility easements in the Wilshire Point addition. Councilman Cooper, no one has signed up to speak.
Is anyone here, though? Yes, I thought so. This is another virtual meeting I had, but in public might be worth staying. Also, welcome back. There was a, was there a honeymoon?
There was, thank you. Mark Zow Johnson Associates, Wayne Sheridan Avenue. Councilman Cooper and I did meet online, and so we discussed this project. We have a multifamily development coming. This plat was approved and recorded probably close to a decade ago at this point, and the existing utility easements that were platted don't align with the current layout for the multifamily. So, there's nothing in them, and so we've requested they be closed and vacated.
Once more, I think this is an interesting way to do some development, and so I'll move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, item L was an ordinance, is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, closing the west 10 feet of right-of-way for Northwest 156th Place and etc. Councilman Carter, no one has signed up to speak.
Who's the applicant on this? I couldn't find, thank you, Mark. Can you explain this a little bit to me?
Good afternoon. Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sayer Road, on behalf of the application. So, on the consent docket was, today was a partial plat vacation, vacating this portion, which was already, went through. This was the closing, which has to be voted on by individual consideration. Viscaya, when we did the adjacent rezoning, insisted that they did not want to any connection through their subdivision. They got, they said they got 100% support. There were like three or four signatures that were questionable because of notaries. They had 100% support of closing and vacating that, and therefore, we didn't need the access in the subdivision, because we had 150th and County Line access all the way around, and so we had no problem with trying to help them with the closing so that there couldn't be any connection there, so.
There seems to be a lot of 100% participations going on around here, so I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes on item L. Passed unanimously. Okay, item M, there's a couple items here related to each other. The, there's an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for denial, rezoning 12516 Roberts Road from AA to SPD 1763. There's also item M1, which is an amendment to the master design statement. This item has been deferred a couple of times, and it, it does have nearly 100% protest, 97.79, which certainly triggers our higher threshold should someone make a motion for approval. And with that, Councilman Pennington, Kelly Work has signed up, and I'm not sure where, what his allegiance is.
Well, Kelly, Kelly's been doing a great job representing neighbors. Mason's here representing the developer or the homeowner, or, excuse me, property owner. I want to say, and for the sake of time, I just want to say thank you to Mason and to Kelly for working on this. My understanding is that Kelly submitted a letter of withdrawal of the protest from the neighbors that he is representing, and that thanks to some, some continuous negotiation, we've been able to reach a resolution. So, I think all of those amendments have been submitted. Do we need to vote on, vote, is it more than one, Sarah? Okay.
Yeah, so as I understand it, just that, if there's nobody else signed up besides Kelly, I'll keep this mechanical and smooth as possible. We submitted a version on November... We submitted a version on November 1st. That was the one that staff had on file. Since then, we came to additional concessions with the neighbors, and we didn't submit that version until, I think it was like yesterday. So what we need to do, we do have an agreement with Kelly's group, and so they withdrawn their protest on the understanding that we make sure that the version that's approved today is consistent with the version that we submitted yesterday. And as I understand it, I need to read the changes into the record. These are the changes specifically that were made between the document that was submitted on November 1st versus the document that was submitted yesterday or two days ago, but it was dated November 17th. So if that's what staff wants me to do, I'll do that now. Okay. So under the special development regulations, section 3, which is the maximum building size and number of buildings, paragraph 1, we are looking at the second sentence. We are striking that and replacing it with the language that reads, "The principal dwelling structure shall be limited to 5,000 square feet of floor area, which shall be permitted by right." The second change is in the following paragraph, which is paragraph 2. We are revising the second sentence to read, "The accessory dwelling unit, comma, whether attached or detached, comma, shall be limited to 1,200 square feet of floor area." We are then adding another sentence directly after that that says, "The maximum separation between the principal dwelling unit structure and the accessory dwelling unit structure shall be 40 feet." Further down that page, under section 5, minimum lot size, we are correcting that from 3.5 to 3.48. That was due to a typo. It was done on one of the conceptual site plans, and we're just fixing that typo. The next page, under section 11, vehicular access, after sentence, well, after the second sentence, we are adding in a sentence that says, "If there are two points of access on Roberts Road, the portions of driveway located within the west 50 feet of the property shall be limited to 12 feet in width. If there is one point of access on Roberts Road, the portion of the driveway located within the west 50 feet of the property shall be limited to 24 feet in width." And then lastly, down the page, under the other development regulations, section 5, dumpsters, we are adding a sentence at the end that reads, "Only residential carts shall be allowed. No commercial dumpsters shall be permitted." So this is a, we went through extensive conversations with the neighbors on this. You might think, based on the protest figures, that we were trying to do a 400-home development, like you heard earlier. What this actually is, is one home, an accessory dwelling unit for their family member down the road, and then a detached garage on 3.5 acres of land. But in order to preserve a lot of the interests that the neighbors raise and concerns, we went through a whole litany of provisions. So we think we've gotten to a point now where this satisfies Kelly's clients and is workable for everybody involved.
Thank you, Mason. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the amendment as read into the record.
And can we do that as a package, like it was just read, of all those different changes?
Sorry, Sarah Welch, Planning Department. Because the, you've never voted on the November 1st amendment, our recommendation is that you just don't take action on the one that's on the agenda, and instead I can read one into the record for you. Would that be okay?
That will be similar to what he just said?
It's, well, he's, he read you the changes from the November 1st document, which is not a document that's ever been voted on.
Right.
And so what I'm about to read will include all changes from the planning commission until the amendments he just read to you. Would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay.
At the end of this, do we just vote once on all the amendments?
Sorry?
At the end of this, we'll just vote once?
Yes, then you're just voting once on the new one.
And it'll be as you've described, not necessarily as he just described?
It will be both.
In addition to what he just described?
It will be, it will be, it will include all of the recommend, all of the changes that they've made and agreed upon before November, up until November 1st, and including the ones that they agreed to as of yesterday.
Which package did he just read?
He read November 17th.
Okay. You're going to add in some other stuff?
Sorry to be complicated. He read you changes from November 1st to November 17th, but we're going to act like November 1st never existed.
Right. So you're going to add in some new things, and he's going to presumably nod his head and say he agrees to that?
I'm hopefully going to connect all the dots and make it short and simple.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. So I think you're voting on amendment to the master design statement dated November 17th, which revises section 1, revises section 1.3, revises section 1.5, which establishes a minimum lot size of 3.48 acres, and modifies section 1.6, it modifies section 1.7, it modifies section 1.11, modifies section 2.9, and it also modifies exhibit B. Okay.
Okay. So you're comfortable with that? Kelly, you're comfortable with that?
Just while he's coming up here, just to clarify for the record, that the version of the master design statement that we submitted that was dated November 17th, 2025, that is the version that we're asking this council to approve.
And it's a collection of the things you and she just said collectively?
Yeah. It reflects all the things that I just said, but also she did all the, well, she's doing my job almost as a lawyer, so.
All right.
So, so Mayor, I'm going to move approval of the amendments as read into the record by both Sarah Welch and Mason Schwartz.
Okay. Sounds good. And we will not take action on M1. So this is a amendment from the floor. All right. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
So now presumably we're on the ordinance. Now, I, now is that, was that protest withdrawal effective, legal, even though it's not on the agenda? Staff certifies that this is now at 36% protest, which is below the threshold required for a supermajority. It is still, it is still recommended for denial because they didn't go back, you know, that's, that is what it is. That's what happened at the planning commission, but we're hearing that, you know, there's been some negotiations since then. So Councilman Pennington, what do you want to do?
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd move approval on the item.
So just to be clear, if we vote yes, are we denying this, or are we?
No, no. He's moving approval.
Okay.
Yeah. We are going opposite the recommendation, but things have hap, things have transpired since the time of that recommendation. So he is, he is motioning for approval. It does not require a supermajority. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously and has a supermajority anyways, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item N was previously deferred, which brings us to item O. This is the second of two meetings on this topic. This is adopting the amended Classic Corridor Revitalization Project Plan 2025. We had a presentation previously, so there's nothing further to present. The council could adopt if they wish. Oh, is this, does this want an emergency? Okay.
They want the emergency?
Sounds like it. So we'll take that vote second. This is just on adoption. We have a motion and a second. Councilman Abors, have you voted? Passed unanimously, and then it sounds like staff is requesting an emergency on this. Is there any particular reason?
I don't recall why we need the emergency on this, Kenny.
You had to be sitting in the back row, didn't you?
Yeah.
I guess it feels like proper oversight to at least ask why we haven't needed an emergency.
I'm actually not sure either, although I think we do have a couple of projects, which you're going to hear about later, that were contingent upon this being created. But I'm not sure why it's recommended for emergency, honestly.
Okay.
I don't know if legal or other staff.
Is there anyone who wouldn't know?
I don't know. I did not make the request.
Okay.
What's the basis for the request?
Well, that's what we're trying to find out. No one knows. We could come back to this and cast that vote in a few minutes if we can get somebody in here to, well, there's Joanna. So Joanna, the question is, there seems to be a belief that somebody thinks an emergency is necessary on item 11O, the amended Classic Corridor Revitalization Project Plan, but nobody knows why.
I don't believe that there is. The two projects that are coming forward later are contingent on approval of this. We can still authorize those allocations because the agreements won't come forward until a few months from now, so I think we're safe to do no emergency.
Okay. I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. So we're not going to vote on the emergency. If somebody, probably got another half hour or so at least before we completely adjourn, if somebody changes their mind on that. All right. So that passed unanimously, and now we're moving on to item P. We have a resolution adopting and confirming an assessment role for the Uptown 23rd Business Improvement District, and we have a public hearing on that topic. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak on that public hearing?
No, they haven't.
They have not, and so we'll advance to the resolution found at P2. Is this actually dying for lack of a second, or is this because, there we go. All right. We have a motion and a second. Councilman Stone, have you voted?
Yes. I voted aye.
All right. Passed unanimously. Okay. Item Q is an ordinance on final hearing, adopting and setting the assessment role for the Uptown 23rd Business Improvement District. So this is just the ordinance mirror image of the resolution we just adopted. No presentation on this. We can take this up for adoption. Item Q. We have a motion and a second. Passed unanimously. Okay. 11R and S are related to each other. This concept was presented at our last meeting. This is relates to charging credit card fees on certain transactions. So this is the second of two meetings where this ordinance is being proposed, so there's no presentation today unless anybody has any questions. R is the ordinance on final hearing relating to taxation. We have a motion and a second. Passed unanimously. Item S is an ordinance on final hearing relating to general schedule of fees. This is along the same lines of previous item relating to credit card fees. I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay. Item T is an ordinance to be introduced and set for final hearing on December 2nd relating to taxation, and we have a, this is the use tax on the arena.
Yes.
Tax. Okay.
Yes. Brian, our assistant city manager, will give us a quick presentation on what we're requesting here.
Yes. Good morning, Brent Bryant, City Manager's Office. Since 1993, with all of our limited, we've been blessed with having many limited purpose special sales taxes that for, for designated period of times, we utilize use tax funds for the city for multiple processes. And so with the approval of the arena tax back in 2023, we knew that we were going to need to do this, and the reason we're doing this at a quicker pace is we've got a, we're working on the financing of the arena, and this is necessary as one of the steps that we need to do as we go forward. So this use tax will run at the same time as the sales tax, which will be April 1, 2028 through March 31 of 2034. Again, like I said, it's necessary for, to support the arena financing, which was approved by this body back in March of 2024. We do anticipate doing the financing in the first half of 2026 as we, as we get where we actually will need the funds. This ordinance does not need an emergency, as we have plenty of time for it to go into effect, so, and we'll be bringing that back to you on December 2nd. Also, on December 2nd, we're going to bring you three other items related to this. One of the things council has done every time we've done the use tax ordinance is we've also done a resolution of intent by the council as to how we're going to spend the funds. And one of the things that we're doing in shoring up the financing of, of the arena is to pledge the use tax as support. We're financing the debt based solely on the sales tax on a one-to-one, a little over a one-to-one ratio. But we need, we pledge the use tax. In addition to that, it gives us a better debt coverage essentially for that. And with that, and that's when you have a higher debt coverage, your bonds become more marketable. When they become more marketable, you hope you get the better interest rates. And so that all plays into that. And so, so we'll also be bringing that resolution of intent to you. Historically, with the MAPS 4 use tax that we have in place, 65% of that goes to public safety equipment, and 35% of it goes to other city facilities, and that's the plan to do that with the arena tax as well. We'll also bring back and amend, we'll also bring an item back to amend the MAPS 4 use tax resolution of intent, only to provide that extra coverage to help us for cash flow purposes while we're doing the arena for our initial debt service payments on that, and that's the only reason we're doing that. Because if you'll recall with this revenue, with the, with the debt, we'll enter into the debt in the next eight months, and interest will start accruing against it, and the revenue doesn't start coming in until after April 1 of 2028. So any kind of coverage we can have would be helpful. And then finally, there will be an arena debt reimbursement resolution that will be brought to you for your consideration. This is required by the Internal Revenue Service as they're issuing our debts as tax-exempt debt, and anytime that you do that, you, if you're going to utilize various funds, and in this case, there's the arena debt, there's arena bond proceeds, and there's also the funds that were approved by the residents of Oklahoma City last month for the support of the arena through our general obligation bond program. And so we'll also need to bring that back. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So this is, as stated, the introduction final hearing is actually in two weeks. We could take a motion if there's no further questions or comments. I have a motion and a second. Passed unanimously. All right. Item U is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we'll advance to the resolution found at U2, declaring that these structures are dilapidated. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item V1 is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for one previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we'll advance to the resolution found at V2, declaring the structures I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item W1 is a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for one previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
So we'll advance to the resolution found at W2, declaring the buildings are abandoned. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item X1 is a public hearing regarding a resolution approving a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2025, 2026, first-year action plan for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, but we do have a presentation on item 2, the resolution approving said substantial amendment.
Ben Davis with the Planning Department will give us an explanation of the changes that are proposed.
Good morning, council. So back in May, you all approved our consolidated plan, which outlines how we spend HUD dollars for community development grant, home, and other programs. So today, we're bringing you a substantial amendment. Basically, whenever, you go to the next link. Basically, whenever we have to make a change to our consolidated plan, we're required to go through a public process with HUD and the city council to approve anything that changes in activity over 25%. New View, Oklahoma, in our consolidated plan, was approved for $300,000 to extend a public water line. The total cost of that water line project is $1.2 million, which they are covering the remainder of that cost. So with your approval, that'll allow us to provide them additional community development block grant funding.
Thanks, Ben.
All right. We could take up a motion to adopt X2. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right. 11 YZ and AA are all related, and there is a presentation.
Yes. Brock Rowe, our Development Services Director, will give us a quick presentation on these proposed changes in our building code.
Yes, thank you, counsel. Mayor, I'm pleased to be here. What we're going to do today with these three resolutions is basically update our code requirements. I'm going to take them one by one. If you look at resolution Y, that one's the existing building code. And what we're doing with that is, first of all, we're correcting a conflicting local amendment that we did back in the adoption of February 27, 2024. We actually changed the verbiage in section 1301.2. And what it did is it really added a lot of confusion to the performance method of the existing building code. And so we're going to move that back to where it says 6 through 12, which is what the intent of the existing building code was from ICC and what has also adopted at our state level, bringing that clarity back to what we can adopt with that to make it better. The other aspect of that one is we are coming... Moving into compliance farther with the state requirements for elevator requirements. We are adopting the ASME A117.1 2022, the ASME A17.3 2023, and the ASME 4... I'm sorry. ASME A18.1 2023, which are all standards that we use for elevator inspections. Moving on to Z, the International Building Code. Again, this one is just updating our standards for the elevator inspections. Moving on to AA, that's the International Residential Code. Again, just updating our elevator standards for that to stay in compliance with the requirements from the state. Those are ASMA, ASME A17.1 2022, and ASME A18.1 2023. And that's all I have. If you have any questions.
And I think everybody saw the outrageous letter we received a few weeks ago from state agency that oversees this, for which they later apologized. This is the response to that letter, just so you know. This is the closure of that issue. If there's no questions, we can take up the resolutions one by one. We have a motion and a second for item Y. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Next up would be Z. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And finally, AA. Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay. Now we are at 11 AB. This is a joint resolution of the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approving an allocation not to exceed $660,000 from the Classen Corridor Revitalization Project Plan for the... Ava?
Yes, sir.
Ava 2.0 project at Northwest 11th and Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Kenny Sewell, the Alliance for Economic Development. So I'm going to give just a brief overview of this deal and then turn it over. The developer's going to give a brief presentation on this. But Ava 2.0, this is for 26 units to be built at Northwest 11th and Lee. It's about a $5.1 million project. The proposal and the ask is not to exceed $660,000 of TIF. Over times, this would be structured as a pay-as-you-go. In other words, they pay their taxes. It would be structured as a rebate of 80% being returned from years 1 to 5, and from year 6 to 15, 50%. This was one of them that was contingent upon, you know, the creation of the... Or the amendment to the Classen Corridor TIF. So with that, I'll turn it over. I think Rohan Gupta is going to give us a presentation, tell you a little bit more about the project, then we'll be happy to answer any questions. I will say also, the TIF Review Committee, which is the body that is composed of all the different taxing jurisdictions, has reviewed and recommended approval, and the Economic Development Trust has also approved this and recommended it.
Good morning. Thank you, counsel. So this is for our Phase 2 of a 26-unit project. We just finished Phase 1 last year, 78 units on the other side of the parking garage. This will continue our development of this portion of Midtown. And, you know, we originally bought this many years ago with the intent to eventually develop these parcels. When we bought it, we thought these would eventually become probably more extensions of office, probably medical office. And as the years have changed, as St. Anthony's has grown, this actually made much more sense to become housing in an area that really doesn't have much more than single-family housing. And one of the more interesting things we found in Phase 1 was because of the unit size and the cost that the units were built at, we were able to put rents at a level to be competitive in the market, but also to be very appealing to renters that normally wouldn't be able to live in this part of the city. And so the median income in... For renters in Phase 1 is about $50,000. And so that renter who would normally have to live in South Oklahoma City or other parts of the city now is able to live in a very urban, walking environment where they're walking to their job or whatever it is they may be doing. So we thought that was a really great part of Phase 1, and we want to continue that success on a Phase 2. This is just a quick outline of the project. So as you can see, it's on the east side of the parking garage. The parking garage was a big help for us, just providing infrastructure that we didn't need to build additional parking to make the project leasable. And this is just a quick schematic of how the units are laid out. Every single unit has its separate kitchen, full kitchen, dishwasher, fridge, stove, and laundry machine. Very little amenities, but the amenities really are being able to live in a very walkable part of the city with a lot of places nearby. And this will be the... This is the rendering of what it's going to look like from the southeast corner. And it's a breakdown of our budget. As you can see, we're... It's a pretty tight budget, but, you know, the TIF makes this project actually much more doable for us.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions?
All right. Well, if there's no questions, we could... Or comments, we could take a motion on the joint resolution. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay. Item AC is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approving an allocation not to exceed $2 million from the Classen Corridor Revitalization Project Plan for the Villa Teresa Hotel Project at 1216 Classen Drive.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Kenny Sewell, the Alliance for Economic Development. A quick summary on this. This is for the Villa Teresa, the hotel portion. So I'm going to give you a little bit of an overview, because this is a little bit unique, that it was a couple-phase project. So originally, there was the hotel phase and the residences, and I think Marva Ellard's going to give us a little bit of an overview of this. Previously, those were both wrapped up sort of in one economic development deal, and they were in the downtown TIF, so TIF 2. The residences have been completed. They've, you know, accrued their TIF incentive. It's not been paid out to developer because it was still dependent upon the hotel piece being completed. That was all happening kind of around COVID times, so... And also with TIF 2 expiring, this was one of the properties that was amended to put into the Classen Corridor TIF so that we could give the hotel piece, you know, a little longer runway and a chance to move forward. Costs are up, you know, as you can imagine. Lending terms are less favorable, et cetera, but we're able to bring this forward. So this piece would just be the hotel piece. It's a $29.5 million project. The request would be $2 million in pay-as-you-go TIF, structured as pay-in and receive 80% back from years 1 through 5 and 60% back in year 6 through 15. We would still keep the old residence piece, which had been completed. It's still contingent upon this hotel being 50% completed before they would receive, even though they've completed that part of the project. So I just wanted to make sure we're clear and transparent on all that and give you that information. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Marva, and she's going to tell you more about the project.
Is it still morning, or is it afternoon? I'm not sure.
Afternoon, yes.
Most of you are very familiar with the Villa Teresa site. My partner, Billy Woodring, and I purchased this back in December of 2017. It was in danger of being torn down, and we didn't want to see that happen. So Billy and I are partners on the residential part of it, and we split the two parcels off between the hotel and the residential. As Kenny said... Are you the driver, sister? Okay. As Kenny said, the condo... I'm sure all of you know a lot about Villa Teresa. It's probably one of the most beloved properties in town. I can't be over there, barely walk down the street, without somebody having a Villa Teresa story that they want to tell me. So it is its own National Register of Historic Properties district. It's probably one of the smallest ones in Oklahoma City. So all the original Villa buildings are part of that district. That's the convent on the left, and that is what we call Anderson 2 on the right. Some of you may not know that the building on the left, well, it's Anderson 1, was built by Frank Anderson, who is M.D. Anderson's older brother. And M.D. Anderson and Frank actually lived in Oklahoma City and moved to Houston, which was a loss to us. So there's a lot of history on this site. The sisters bought the property or started acquiring buildings at Villa in 1933. I went to see them a couple of months ago. There's six of them left, and they're very excited about all of this going on. These are the condos that Billy and I have done. 13 of them are sold. There's 17 total, and we're hoping to close on another one by the end of the year. So as Kenny said, and I want to thank Kenny and Joanna for working on this with us to try to help us be able to do this, as Kenny said, it's about a $29 million project. Kenny kind of alluded to the fact that, as you can imagine, hotel financing during COVID was not a popular activity. So we had what we felt was almost a loan in place. COVID happened. No one wanted to finance a hotel. We're back on track. We've got a loan. We've got a tax credit investor, and we're ready to go.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions? All right. Well, if there's no questions or comments, we can take up the resolution found at AC. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay. Item AD1 is a resolution authorizing the municipal council to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of McGuffey v. Progressive and OKC. Staff is not requesting an executive session. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. AE1 is a resolution authorizing the municipal council to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Tibbs v. City of OKC. Staff is not requesting an executive session. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. AF1 is a resolution authorizing Jessica Dark and Riley Nestor of Pierce Couch Hendrickson Basinger &amp; Green to represent city employee Jesse Hilly in the case of Knight v. City of OKC. Staff is not requesting an executive session. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item AG is an executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations for fiscal year '25-'26 with the FOP, IAF, and AFSMI. We can take a vote to go into executive session now and handle the executive session itself at the conclusion of our other business. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item AH1, our claims recommended for denial. Staff is not requesting executive session. Of course, 1B was already struck. So it's really a claim at this point. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. AI1, our claims recommended for approval. Staff is not requesting an executive session. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. That concludes our votes this morning. We're now at item 12, comments from counsel. Word 1. Word 2. Word 3. Word 4. Word 5. Word 6. Word 7.
I'm going to make a quick comment, just to again thank the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta for being here today. I'm very biased, because my sister, Tasha Timberlake, is one of your sisters. And so I'm very excited for you all to be here and just appreciative. I've been on this council for about six months, and this is the longest meeting I've been to. So I'm very sorry. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to visit with you, but we are going to go into executive session, so I would highly recommend you go ahead and have lunch. And so we'll do our best to join you as soon as we can. But thank you again for being here.
Word 8. Yes, thank you. And thanks for sticking it out, and you did get a good flavor for city government this morning.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
Sorry. I, too, Mayor, think that Councilman Carter is a good guy. I just think that's worth saying.
All right. That concludes comments from counsel. Item 13 is citizens to be heard. Sean Graham has signed up to speak. Does not appear to be in the chamber, so we will now go to executive session and then return.